This April 25, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Franklin Middle School String Chamber Ensemble under the direction of Devon Wilcox. The Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's regular meeting. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Hold on, I need to check one thing real quick. The number we're pulling off. 5.04.
6.04?
5.04. The no-change memo. Agenda item 5.04 has been pulled from the consent agenda at the request of a Board member. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I now call on Mr. Tigner for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Teacher Appreciation Week is May 6 to 10, 2019. Teachers are real-life superheroes. They educate, innovate, encourage, and support, touching the lives of millions of children. Every day, over 15,000 teachers in Fairfax County Public Schools demonstrate their personal and professional dedication to providing excellent education for the children in our community. Our teachers are committed to ensuring that all children develop their full potential for academic achievement. Teachers are influential in fostering in their students both helpful self-concepts and a sense of civic responsibility. Fairfax County Public Schools values the skills, creativity, and professionalism that characterize our teachers. Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month is May 2019. Americans of Asian and Pacific ancestry have made significant contributions to the history and development of the United States in many fields of endeavor such as science, commerce, the arts, and humanities. The Fairfax County School Board recognizes that an understanding of these contributions should be an integral part of the year-round education of all students. Since 1992, the President of the United States has proclaimed May to be Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month, and has chosen this month to pay tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in its future success. School Nurse Day is May 8, 2019. School Nurse Day was established in 1972 to foster a better understanding of the role of a school nurse in the educational setting. This annual event recognizes the contributions that school nurses make every day to improve the health and success of our nation's children. This year's theme, "School Nurses: Better Health, Better Learning," reflects the significant roles that school nurses have in healthcare in their school communities, as well as in modeling health and resiliency. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the health and well-being of students and is an integral part of a quality school health program. School nurses promote health, safety, prevention, and wellness, intervene with actual and potential health problems, and provide case management services. They are an invaluable bridge connecting healthcare providers, public health, and families. The school system works closely with the Fairfax County Health Department to provide quality services to children of Fairfax County Public Schools and recognize May 9 as School Nurse Day in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. I now call on Mr. Moon for a resolution on voter registration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a resolution on voter registration. Before I read this resolution, let me just briefly state that, as we all know, voting is a fundamental right and also duty for all citizens in the United States to continue building the best democracy. And such rights must be exercised by all citizens in the country, whether you are old or young. And if you are a citizen and older than 18, at least 18 years old, and if you are registered to vote yet, please go and register. For those students who are only 17, as long as you turn 18 by the date of election, which is November 5 this year, then you can go and register and start voting in the primary on June 11. With that, let me read this resolution. Whereas voting is the most important civic opportunity of a United States citizen is the cornerstone of our democracy. Whereas the ethical and global citizen attribute of the FCPS portfolio of graduate is an expectation for all students, and schools are committed to developing students who will exercise their rights and responsibilities as citizens. Whereas providing fair and equal access to voting is an ongoing effort in our country. Whereas civic education contributes to the development of engaged citizens and increases the likelihood of a future participation in voting. Whereas providing information to students about voter registration and how, when, and where to vote prepares the students to exercise their voting rights. Whereas young people who are registered to vote participate in numbers close to the participation rates of older voters. Whereas voting is habit-forming, when young people exercise their voting rights, they are likely to become lifelong voters exercising their duties and responsibilities as citizens. Therefore, be resolved that Fairfax County School Board recognizes the efforts of the League of Women Voters, the Fairfax County Board of Elections, Fairfax County Council of PTAs, Inspire Virginia, and the FCPS Social Studies Team and teachers who provide voter registration opportunities and nonpartisan information about voting procedures to eligible students. Therefore, be further reserved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes schools that meet the high school voter registration challenges sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and Inspire Virginia, which identifies schools that register at least 50% of eligible seniors. So I move.
I second the motion. So, seconded by Ms. Evans. And Mr. Moon, would you like to talk to your motion?
I just want to add that high school voter registration challenges is until May 20. And thus far, we have six high schools that have already met the standard to qualify to be awarded, recognized by this school board. But I'm hoping that all the other high schools also be able to meet the standard we are expecting, and we'll recognize them. We'll recognize all schools at our meeting on May 23.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And I made an error. Ms. Strauss seconded that, so Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. I'm particularly pleased to congratulate again the League of Women Voters, the County Council of PTAs, our teachers in our schools, who make it as easy as possible for those students who are eligible to vote to be registered. This is a huge partnership, and I think everyone is to be commended. It needs to be very easy to register, and we certainly work hard to make it easy and encourage all of our students to register, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Does anybody else want to speak to the resolution? No?
Well, I would just add one comment, which is a reminder to parents and students that are thinking and talking about voting this year, that you can actually register to vote as soon as you turn, as long as you will be 18 by Election Day in November. You can register to vote now and actually participate in primaries. And so I would encourage parents to have conversations with their students about how important it is that we are lucky here in the United States that we can exercise our right to vote. And please go ahead and register. So with that, I will take the vote.
All those, I will call for the vote, all those in favor. And that vote is unanimous. It passes. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for an anniversary resolution of Oakview Elementary.
Thank you. I am honored this evening to celebrate one of my Braddock District Elementary Schools, and so this resolution is honoring the 50th anniversary of Oakview Elementary School. Whereas Oakview Elementary School proudly celebrated its 50th anniversary on March 30 of 2019 for its service to our Woodson and Robinson communities since its opening on September 9, 1968. And whereas Oakview is a high-performing elementary school dedicated to providing dynamic instruction and an inviting school environment for its students by offering programs in ESOL, Special Education, Advanced Academics, and Enhanced Autism Services, along with STEAM, circus clubs, after-school clubs, and a strong focus on the arts. And whereas the school has continued to provide the best educational tools and learning opportunities for its students by honoring five decades of Oakview traditions, embracing new initiatives, perfecting academic discourse at all grade levels, growing math and language arts workshop models, providing ample opportunities for service learning, and equipping classrooms with the latest educational technology such as integrated smart boards and mounted projectors. And whereas the faculty, parents, and community of Oakview envision its students will become active, responsible members of our society through student participation and community activities such as power packs to affect change within the school, the neighborhood, and the larger community, and the students will develop positive self-concepts, social skills, and healthy lifestyles as they grow, learn, and serve together. And whereas thousands of students have passed through the doors at Oakview Elementary, including students of former Oakview Eagles, its proud second generation, and have benefited from a comprehensive education focused on the academic and pro-social development of tomorrow's leaders through the dedicated and caring efforts of its teachers, staff, PTA, and families, who all believe in the positive impact of this tight-knit community and are looking forward to its next 50 years. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board honors Oakview Elementary on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, commends the school on its history of providing educational excellence and enrichment opportunities to its students and the community, and conveys its most heartfelt best wishes for its continued success in the years to come. I so move.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Just briefly, that it was absolutely a pleasure to join the Oakview community on March 30. It was truly a remarkable celebration and the hard work and dedication that came from the Oakview Eagles and what they did for the celebration for all of the families and bringing back multiple principals who were there to honor the history of Oakview, to see the multiple generations of families, parents who'd passed through the halls of Oakview or now are proud parents of their new children. It really is just an incredible community. They had food trucks, they had hundreds and hundreds of guests there with the music and the Oakview Eagle, and this incredible joy and excitement and enthusiasm. It was really an honor to be there and celebrate with all of you. Just so happy that you could be here tonight and celebrate this special occasion with all of us. And I want to thank you again to the teachers, the staff, the administration, and to our families and the PTA volunteers. You are what makes the adage, "It takes a village to raise a child," and you are raising wonderful children in our schools. Thank you so much.
Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. So, many of my Clifton and Fairfax Station children are dragged out of my community, but they're welcomed into the Oakview community, and I was very pleased. Well, I couldn't be there for the celebration to join Principal Booker, and we had a wonderful conversation, said hello to the office staff. And, you know, I'm not driving, having a senior at Robinson, I'm not driving past every day anymore. But all of the years that I spent driving and seeing such an engaged community, such a respectful community, those students getting so well-prepared to go on to Robinson and Woodson, you should be very, very proud of the community of students that you have built. It's a reflection of the community of the staff that's in the building.
So, would any other Board members like to speak? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor. And that is unanimous.
And now I would like to invite the Oakview community to please come join us at the dais for photos. And I do want to especially recognize, as everyone comes to take the photo, Principal Sarah Booker, Assistant Principal Laura Adams, Terri Newman, our school-based technology specialist, an Oakview staff member since 1997, our band director Kim Andre, a staff member since 1994, Virginia Doherty, our PTA president, and teacher Katie Lee. Thank you again for coming out and enjoying this celebration with us.
I now call on Mrs. Hines for a Children's Mental Health Awareness Day recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a recognition for Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, which will be on May 6. The well-being of children has a profound, immediate, and lasting effect on our community. Nationally, over one in five children and youth have a mental health issue, and only half of children and youth with behavioral health issues receive treatment. Fairfax County Public Schools is a partner with county agencies and nonprofit organizations in the Healthy Minds Fairfax Initiative to increase awareness of signs of mental distress and to address barriers to accessing services through the coordination of prevention, early intervention, and treatment services. The school board is pleased to recognize May 6, 2019, as National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Fairfax County. This is an opportunity to celebrate the work of our school division to increase awareness of the connection between mental health and social, emotional, and psychological well-being. Our students are contributing to this increased awareness through their work on the Student Advisory Council and through participation in wellness clubs and activities in their schools. At this time, I would like to invite members of the Student Advisory Council, FCPS staff, and community partners who are here this evening in support of National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day to please join us at the dais for a photo with the Board.
I now call on Ms. Darrenak Kofax for a recognition of the Best Communities for Music Education Award.
Thank you, Chairman Sanders. I am honored to be reading this, particularly given that we are being awarded from the National Association of Music Merchants. I just have a brief story. When I was a PTA mom back in elementary school, NAMM awarded our elementary school, Springfield Estates, the opportunity to have an intergenerational music, a week-long production that ended up in a production with grandparents and children in the school, and it was just a wonderful thing. I was the cultural arts coordinator, so I'm so excited to be reading this and to, you know, very proud of us as a system when so many people are cutting the arts and programming. So, Fairfax County Public Schools has been named with the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education Award for its outstanding commitment to music education by NAMM Foundation. The NAMM Foundation is a nonprofit organization supported in part by the National Association of Music Merchants and has approximately 10,400 members around the world. This recognition is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. To be considered for this recognition, Fairfax County Public Schools had to answer detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, and support for music programs within our school system. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I would like to thank the NAMM Foundation for awarding us with the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education Award, as both of our organizations recognize the value and importance to teach music education to all children worldwide. And now at this time, I would like to invite Jenna Day from the NAMM Foundation to present this award, and Katrina Chaney, the music education specialist, who will accept the award on behalf of FCPS. Please come up and join us for a photo.
Since 1927, the American Speech Language Hearing Association, ASHA, has celebrated Better Hearing and Speech Month every year in May. The theme this year is Communication Across the Lifespan. The annual event provides opportunities to promote services that can improve the quality of life for those who experience problems with speaking and listening. An estimated 42 million people have communication disorders, and they impact 1 in 10 families. Currently, Fairfax County Public Schools provides speech and language services to more than 10,000 students. Audеologists and special education teachers also serve more than 500 deaf and hard-of-hearing students in class-based programs via base school itinerant services and in childhood programs. FCPS annually observes and celebrates Better Hearing and Speech Month and encourages all citizens in our school community to recognize the efforts and dedication and skills of the speech-language pathologists, audologists, and teachers of students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. Before I say "at this time," because we don't have this printed, so as a parent of a student who received services from multiple professionals in this group, I am profoundly grateful, and you can be very much assured that he communicates really well, sometimes too well. So, at this time, you did a good job. At this time, I would like to invite Vision and Hearing Services staff, who are here this evening, to please join us at the dais for a photo with the board.
I'd like to ask you to angle your body and take a step closer.
I now call on Mrs. Keys-Gamarra for a recognition of the School Nutrition Employee Week.
Caring, trained, thoughtful, professional, dedicated. These are just a few words that describe today's school nutrition professional. School nutrition employees in Fairfax County Public Schools are dedicated to supporting the needs of all students by preparing safe, fresh, healthy, and delicious meals each day. Our nutrition professionals play an important role in educating the whole child by embracing the innate goals and pledging a strong intentional commitment to heightening student success in a caring culture. School nutrition employees strategically balance many roles while proudly serving families and school communities all year long. These thoughtful employees offer valuable contributions that enhance FCPS's premier education system by creating welcoming environments solely dedicated to serving all children in an inclusive and equitable manner. Truly meaningful work worth celebrating. At this time, I would like to invite the Food Services staff, who are in the audience, to please join me at the dais for a photo with the board.
Which was early this morning. I was planning commission hearing on the One University project.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm up next.
I am very pleased to offer this resolution recognizing National Law Day. We are honored to have Joanne Coob, Assistant Professor at George Mason University's Annan and Scalia Law School and Director of the Liberty and Law Center, in attendance this evening, as our board adopts this resolution in support of Law Day. The 2019 Law Day theme is Free Speech, Free Press, Free Society. It is particularly fitting that Professor Coob joins us tonight as her research and writing interests include freedom of speech and of the press, including corporate and political speech. Ms. Coob, if you would please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much for joining us. I also wanted to recognize Julie Strandly, whose efforts were instrumental in organizing the May 1 Law Day event at Annandale High School this year, where I will present the board's resolution. Ms. Strandly is our Fairfax County Planning Commissioner, representing Mason District, as well as a very active volunteer in our Mason District Schools, and a strong advocate of Law Day. She's served on the American Bar Association's Standing Committee on Public Education, which organizes the National Law Day celebration, and she coordinated the American Bar Association's visit to Annandale High School, which is the first time the ABA has visited a high school to celebrate Law Day. Ms. Strandly, would you please stand up and be recognized as well? Thank you very much. So I will add before reading this that, as a former journalist myself, this year's theme particularly resonates strongly with me. Free press and free speech are fundamental pillars of our democracy and of our society, and we must remember to never take them for granted. So with that, National Law Day resolution. Whereas, Law Day is a day of national dedication to the principles of government under law, as stated by President Dwight Eisenhower, who established the first nationwide commemoration in 1958. And whereas, the 2019 Law Day theme, Free Speech, Free Press, Free Society, enables us to reflect on the way that freedom of speech and freedom of the press provide the foundation of our free society. And whereas, the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution states, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." And whereas, Law Day is on the Fairfax County Public Schools' notable events calendar, and its tenants are embedded in the FCPS portrait of a graduate pillar of the ethical and global citizen who understands the foundations of our country and values our rights, privileges, and responsibilities while demonstrating empathy, compassion, and respect for others. And whereas, the Fairfax County Public Schools welcomes American Bar Association President Bob Carlson, other top ABA leaders and alumnus Jim Acosta, to Annandale High School for Law Day 2019, and applauds the multiple events taking place in our schools to commemorate that day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board recognizes Wednesday, May 1, 2019, as Law Day, and encourages our schools, community, and businesses to celebrate, preserve, and strengthen these principles that form the foundation of our free society. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Just a few more words briefly. I think I've said most of what I wanted to say. I did want to thank Annandale High School, and particularly Principal Tim Thomas and the staff there, for all the work that went into creating their celebration there this year, and of course, Ms. Strandly. So I very much look forward to joining them on May 1.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, briefly. I really welcome this celebration. I know that my former fellow Planning Commissioner Julie Strandly has been working on Law Day program since her daughter was in first grade, and she will be graduating this year. So, thank you, Julie. But I also appreciate the opportunity to celebrate the rule of law. I cannot imagine where our community would be without that rule of law, and particularly having an opportunity to educate our students on civic engagement and understanding the importance of the rule of law. So I'm grateful to be able to participate in this. I hope that this will not be a one-time thing, and that it will not retire with Carolyn graduating, but that it will spread across our county, and our children will have a greater opportunity to learn and participate in this opportunity. So thank you very much.
And Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, just briefly. As the other school board member who represents the wonderful community of Annandale High School, I'm just very, very appreciative of Julie Strandly and all those involved in bringing this to this incredible celebration of something that's so important. I've now spent 27 years married to an attorney and have great appreciation for the profession. And the thought that we're going to create a day where we're going to really help students to connect with what this really means and why there's such a value to it in our society is very exciting. So I'll look forward to joining Ms. Evans in presenting the resolution at your community on that day. And just again, want to thank our professor for joining us as well this evening. It's very much appreciated that you're here and honoring something that is important, and I'm very pleased that Fairfax County Schools is taking this special effort to recognize it, especially when we have so many wonderful attorneys on this school board.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And I want to bring attention to how wonderful it is that we're celebrating both Law Day and voter registration, because the two are cornerstones of our democracy. So it's truly a nice evening to celebrate. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? and voter registration, because the two are cornerstones of our democracy. So it's truly a nice evening to celebrate. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table.
And at this time, I would ask Professor Coob, Ms. Stranley, others here who are here to celebrate Law Day with us, and all those involved in the legal profession, please come down and join us for a photograph with the Board. And just one more thank you and recognition to our wonderful parent and advocate, Teri Adams, who's here with us tonight as well, who was very much involved in organizing and volunteering. And I know I will be seeing you also on May 1st, so thank you for all you do.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. So I will call the first three speakers, so you're ready. Shre Gupta, Diane Cooper-Gould, Norman Hall.
Okay, so I'm a student at Kilmer Middle School, and I'm here to discuss, like, a problem in, like, a system, in a way. So in the SRNR, it says that you have the rights to present a complaint to teachers, counselors, or a school principal if the actions or decisions made by a school official do not seem to be in the best interest of the student and to expect a response. And I've asked my... So I asked my teacher if I can submit an assignment even though it was a day late, because my hand was injured. And I didn't... I got a response that was no. So I came and I went up to my principal, and vice-principal, and I asked them, and the response was no. I'd also sent an email about the assignment attached, and they said they never got it and they can't accept it. And also, one more thing is that for one of my... I submitted an assignment, and it was put on the gradebook last second, and I had no time to, like, redo it or anything, if it was, like, bad or something. So I would just like to ask if there's, like, you can add, like, a week after the grading for kids to redo if a teacher puts an assignment late, and for teachers to put up the assignments faster. And, like, all the stuff, all the assignments are listed on time, right after, like, school, before school ends. So when I go home, or any kid goes home, they see what, like, what assignments they have to do, and that it's all in the right place. Thank you.
Mr. Gupta, thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate your voice here. Diane?
Good evening. I'm Diane Cooper-Gould, President of Fairfax County SEPTA. And as my term comes to an end, I've been thinking a lot about our advocacy over the past few years. And I want to thank this school board in particular. You have embraced us graciously and accepted feedback with welcome. I also want to invite you to my favorite event of the year, which is our May 4th SEPTA Awards, where we celebrate the teachers and staff and students who are doing outstanding work with special education and inclusion in our community. And we would also like to invite FCPS leadership and the community as well. So, moving on. More than once, I have been told by people in leadership in Fairfax County that Fairfax is better than other places, and that people are worried that a group of special education parents will just be complaining. Both of those statements are a warning to me. They indicate that not only are our children misunderstood and seen as other, but that so are we. And I know now that staff are as well. The siloed mentality still persists, and the feeling seems to be that we are a problem to solve, a complaint to be silenced, and not an active part of the community to embrace. I've now heard from over 150 families and staff regarding the restraint and seclusion issue. The overwhelming message is, trust is broken. Families are scared. Families feel disrespected by the language used by FCPS leadership that appears to make light of the seriousness of this issue and are troubled by language that negatively characterizes and stereotypes students with disabilities as behavior problems, rather than students trying to communicate needs. Families are concerned that leadership wants to sweep this under the rug and move on as if nothing has happened. The community wants the findings of the external independent audit made public. The community wants FCPS to actively seek positive proactive replacements to minimize the use of restraint and seclusion. And the community wants... The teachers are overwhelmed and undersupervised. So I want to ask, are we a community that truly wishes to lead the way, as Fairfax often says? Are we only interested in appearing to lead? Over the years, there's been a lot of talk about change, and I've seen a lot of presentations that don't actually lead to implementation, or concrete changes, or answer difficult questions. Many initiatives, such as the Unstuck and On Target Initiative, were invested in, then implemented without fidelity, or dropped as soon as the piloted programs are completed. And why is that? Because there is no plan for universal implementation. As parents advocate, we ask, where is fidelity? Where is follow-through? Where is the consistency both within and across schools? My asks now are almost the same as they were when we launched, plus a few more. Please make public, meaningful data collection and analysis on plans for change on the following list you will see in front of you, because I'm running out of time. We do believe it's time for FCPS to do a full and independent audit and external evaluation of how we administer special education at FCPS. Thank you.
Through my remarks, I want to explain for current and prospective school board members what it is that I seek as an advocate. Public agency plans should start with options presented and reviewed with stakeholders. At the last meeting, the school board had a presentation and discussion about the pro-former annual report for special education formula funding. I read such documents to see how staff presents issues and watch school board members ask questions to understand the context with which policy discussions take place. Every so often, there's a comment or question which reflects a misunderstanding, and that is often when I speak. With no planned options to compare, my focus was on the enrollment projections. These numbers conform to the budget, so that's good, but over the past several weeks, I could find nobody to explain where the numbers by category and service level come from, even after staff was publicly asked to comment on them. Context is key, because in answering Budget Question 33 about the confidence of staff in the total number, staff replied that in the past, accuracy has exceeded 100%, with a value of 100.8%. When I see such errors go uncorrected, it tells me that the administration and school board have a selective focus, much as students with executive function issues may apply their attention to areas that teachers may find off-topic. I have learned that I really don't gain much by calling attention to a litany of misstatements and factual errors. Now, some want me to blend positive messages with critical assessments. Yes, I can do that, but it goes against my nature to not apply my analytic skills as a first step. And you know what? Providing services to people with disabilities is really complicated, no less in public education than I discovered it was in public transportation 25 years ago. My classroom education about planning introduced me to endogenous and exogenous variables. I learned how those terms were used to get at strategic planning. I know school board members have advocacy in their past and figured out ways to persuade FCPS to make changes with specific goals in mind. What separates my issues from yours is that there really are no simple solutions and plans that would lead to excellence in serving all students with disabilities. Looking at the budget chart on page 130, can you keep in mind the strengths and weaknesses of groups across its rows and columns? Oh, and who reviews the characteristics and frequency of all the teachers who provide special education? Compensation for all of these positions is important work, as is getting a good handle on the supply of employees to work as instructional assistants. These details matter. If solutions to the technical questions of student and teacher distributions, or the more important questions in staffing and outcomes, were simple, somebody would have already established the path forward. We are not there, and I don't think we're close. Look, I admire each member of the school board and the candidates running to join you. Everyone shows patience in listening to me, share my perspective on special ed. But no matter how much praise I offer, finding better solutions for all will take some back and forth. I say that if you want to lead FCPS in matters for students with disabilities, you must have ongoing, frequent dialogue with advocates throughout the development stages of policymaking. While the county's strategic planning process so far is open...
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Yours is not. Thank you.
Laura Ramirez-Drain and Pamela Ananiewu.
A medida que el mundo se vuelve más digital, más papel, más personas, sienten las aulas deberían hacer lo mismo. Hoy en día muchos educadores apoyan el uso de tabletas, iPads y otros dispositivos inteligentes para reemplazar los libros de texto. La idea actual es que el aula debe reflejar el mundo. Si todos dan la información de las pantallas, también deberían de hacerlo los alumnos en las aulas. Pero este pensamiento tiene fallas que deja a los estudiantes sin habilidades críticas. Si vamos a preparar a los estudiantes de hoy para que se conviertan en trabajadores del futuro, debemos permitirles resolver los problemas, practicar la innovación y tomar buenas decisiones. Consideraciones. Uno, la cuestión de la lectura impresa frente a la lectura en tabletas o digital. No es una pregunta u otra. Los estudiantes de hoy necesitan ser bilingües. Esto significa pueden ser expertos en leer imprestamente y también consumidores de los medios digitales. La gente lee las pantallas de manera diferente del material impreso. Las personas tienen que ojear y escanear a través de texto digital. A menudo las hojas en las pantallas con sus ojos moviéndose en patro D.F. o en Z. El esquimming funciona rápido pero resulta en menor comprensión. La gente tiende a leer las letras más lentas. Imprenta lleva más tiempo, pero los estudiantes puntúan más alto en comprensión con la lectura impresa. La lectura profunda asegura que los estudiantes involuquen en el texto impreso más cuidadosamente. La instrucción basada en habilidades puede enseñar a los estudiantes a practicar los hábitos de la mente. Por ejemplo, un pensamiento crítico, hacer referencias y evaluar fuentes. Con todos los medios de instrucción incluidos en impresión y las pantallas. La alfabetización bilingüe asegura que los estudiantes estén preparados para el futuro del cambio rápido y aumentando el uso de inteligencia artificial y la creación de nuevos empleos. El futuro del mundo del trabajo sería diferente de las oficinas de hoy. Pensadores creativos y eficaces tendrán éxito en el mundo del mañana.
Ms. Ananiewu, followed by Amanda Campbell, Robin Lillieville-Newell, and Animesh Gupta.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for your time, school board. As you know, my name is Pamela Ananiewu, and I'm also a candidate for school board in the Mount Vernon region, but most importantly, I'm a mother of three FCPS children. And also, I'm an alumna of FCPS. I graduated from Robinson. I want to show you my little boy, for all of you guys to see. Last month, I testified, and this is my little girl. I want all of you guys to see this. Last month, I testified at the Virginia Department of Education. I testified on the use of restraint and seclusion in Fairfax County Public Schools against my children. In October of last year, this boy was put in a chokehold by school resource officers. He was five years old. This little girl was also restrained and secluded in Fairfax County Public Schools. The school board, regional leadership, special education department, and most importantly, Dr. Brayman, the superintendent, all have been made aware of this. The chokehold incident happened last year, and till this day, I have not heard a response on the incident that happened for my son, and I haven't even gotten a report. Meanwhile, as a mother, I witnessed this right before my eyes, and nobody could tell me that he was a danger to anybody else or to himself. To let you know a little bit about the incident, I came in, and there were five, five school personnel, including the principal and the assistant principal, were there as a school resource officer had my son in a chokehold. To let you know, it will be two years in May that their father passed away suddenly from a heart condition. I've also brought my oldest daughter's inhaler to the school. So the principal is aware that there's a family history of certain things. Meanwhile, she stood there and watched my son be put in a chokehold, and I literally said, "Let him go," three times. Nobody blinked, nobody did anything. I had to reach out and grab him on the fourth time to get him away. And this is to show you how calm he was. Like, we walked from there to right here, he sat down and put on his shoes. For somebody who they said was in crisis, that's not crisis. You're not going to reach out and walk from there to there and sit down and put on your shoes. So I'm here to tell you that restraint and seclusion is being abused in Fairfax County Public Schools, and nobody, it feels like, is doing anything about it. And then I hear from parents that we have allies on the school board fighting against restraint and seclusion. We have the advisory committee, we have SEPTA, but none of those people, I don't think, have their kids been subject to restraint and seclusion. Nobody has asked me, nobody has asked Jennifer, what's happened, or how we can help. And I'm so, so disappointed, and I want to know why none of us have been included in this talk.
Ms. Ananiewu, thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Campbell?
The special education plan you're voting on tonight clearly indicates that there is a projected increase in the number of students receiving special education services for FY 2020, yet simultaneously projects that the number of overall related services provided will decrease. Given that those receiving CAT-B services typically require more supports in related services, how is it logical to project an increase in the number of CAT-B services and an increase in the total unduplicated enrollment count, yet a decrease in the number of overall related services? The lack of appropriate placements and support staff affects so many issues in special education, from student achievement... from student achievement to restraint and seclusion. It is a fundamental issue that cannot be ignored if FCPS is serious about rebuilding trust with the special education community. I appreciate the details provided in the restraint and seclusion report presented by DSS earlier this month. That said, many in the community still feel FCPS is focused on the data reporting alone while ignoring the fundamental truth that restraint and seclusion is traumatizing children. The public conversation must include solutions that drastically reduce or prohibit their use, and that aspect of the conversation has been sorely lacking. I understand that this is an involved issue, and it's important to move forward carefully using well-researched and best practices. That said, there are things FCPS can do right now, and I do want to clarify, there are multiple members of the SEPTA board who have had children restrained and secluded. This is a personal issue as well. As you continue to work on next year's budget, I implore you again to address the staffing ratios for all related service providers. I cannot stress enough how pivotal providing appropriate placements and supports is to proactively addressing the behaviors that result in restraint and seclusion. Additionally, please implement the recommended training requirements from the proposed VA DOE Regulations Governing the Use of Seclusion and Restraint in Public Elementary and Secondary Schools in Virginia document now. Be the leader that FCPS is known for, and don't wait to be instructed to do it by the state. Whether the state provides funding for this training eventually or not, this is child welfare at stake and should take priority. Provide mental health counseling and follow-up to children who have been restrained and secluded, as well as the teachers who have had to implement it. A debrief with an administrator afterwards is not the same. We must address their trauma. Ban prone restraint, mechanical restraint, and chemical restraint now. Put it in writing as full policy, not mere guidelines. There is no reason this cannot be done immediately, as it still allows for restraint methods that do not restrict a child's breath. Expand the external audit beyond CSS sites and public day schools. The data SEPTA has provided to the school board from our survey clearly shows restraint and seclusion are happening in all school placements at all grade levels, not just those specified programs. You can't adequately address the problem if you don't understand the scope in the first place. Families and teachers need a safe place to be able to report without fear of retribution. Thank you.
Ms. Newell, followed by Animesh Gupta.
Good evening. We'll be referring to electromagnetic frequency in my presentation as EMF. Did you know that last month, quote, "Two-hundred-and-fifty scientists from more than forty countries signed a petition to the United Nations warning of the possible harmful effects of wireless AirPods that sit in the ear canal, exposing sensitive skin tissue to potentially dangerous levels of radiation?" The petition warns levels of EMF contributing to increased cancer risk, cellular stress on the ear canal, DNA changes, learning and memory deficits impacting those with attention deficit disorder and neurological developmental disorders, unquote. How many of us parents have had any idea regarding the dangers of these devices? Before two weeks ago, I did not. Put another way, how many parents have kids who have been saying, "I want iPods"? Dr. Moskowitz, a researcher, has been studying cellphone EMF exposure and calling for more study of Apple iPads, quote, "Due to the intensity, EMFs, and their position in the ear canal, proximity to the brain," stating, quote, "The magnetic field of the wireless AirPods used to talk to each other must pass through the brain," unquote. Researchers agree that wearing iPods can be compared to, quote, "conducting an experiment on yourself," and that current regulations are oblivious to these exposures. I'm not an audiologist, a researcher, an ENT specialist, or a biochemist. I'm a mental health professional and a parent who is concerned about unsafe products being used by our kids, who are minors, who have no understanding regarding dangers of these products protecting the safety of our kids' ears. Did you know these one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-dollar bits are also in demand by kids with social anxiety? Being worn in the ears, they send a kind of, quote, "visual message" to parents, teachers, and friends to stay away or signal, "I don't want to talk right now." For others, AirPods are being inserted into the ears daily, worn similar to earrings, as if they are part of an outfit. Kids are wearing them so much that they report forgetting that they even have them in their ears and wearing them every day, all day, without being aware of EMF exposure. I'd like to propose the following solutions to start the conversation regarding the hazards of AirPods. Teaching videos played during law and time, or placed on the school website, or even on Instagram showcasing the dangers of regular AirPod use on normal hearing would go far to help educate kids. Just as vaping talked about long-term usage leading to popcorn lung becoming more widespread, the dangers of EMF and AirPod usage could also be added to the health curriculum taught in middle and high schools, and the importance of making good choices when it comes to protecting your brain and being mindful of harmful influences.
Thank you, Ms. Newell.
Thank you.
Dear school board members and Fairfax County taxpayers, I'm here to talk about, my name is Animesh, and I'm here to talk about the students' rights and responsibilities, specifically the present a complaint to teachers, counselors, or school principal, and how it is loosely interpreted by the school. And to highlight that, if a child is injured or sick, and the school has provided a disability letter from the hospital and the doctor, the school does not institute a disability or a five-or-four plan for that timeframe, and the child is graded as a normal child. Moreover, the child submits the assignment a little late, the child is penalized and either given a grade zero or a lower grade. The grades are randomly flipped as per the discretion of the assistant principal and the teacher, made zero to one, one to zero. If the student presents a complaint, it takes three months to get a hearing and be told that the quarter has closed. Good luck, try it next quarter. The grades on assignments tests are not updated until the end of the quarter. If the child has missed any activities, imagine a child having eight subjects plus extracurricular activities, and he has to manage assignments from different teachers, and one teacher or multiple teachers don't update their assignments, it's going, I mean, it's like a nightmare for them to manage. He's penalized with the teacher, the teacher creates its policy that is in conflict with the FCPS grading policy. Please update the students' rights and responsibilities to have a timeframe for the response from the school and the teachers, hold teachers accountable for the lack of response, and if possible, provide a training on what the FERPA Act is, and so that both the teachers and the parents are informed of their rights and responsibilities. Also, if a parent asks for follow-ups, it is labeled as "You're being rude." And now, I mean, I really feel sad that this is happening. I've been trying to get a solution since Jan, but I feel sad. I hope you can make a positive change. Thank you.
Marie Brennan, followed by Jennifer Tid.
Members of the board and Fairfax County citizens, my name is Marie Brennan. I'm a tenth-grade student at W.T. Woodson High School. In November of 2018, an off-campus felony offense was committed against me involving three individuals, two being Woodson students at the time of the incident, and the other being a former Woodson student. Due to the digital nature of the crime, it was shared over social media with many of my peers. Although the crime did not take place on school property, the use of social media allowed it to quickly infiltrate the halls of school. When I decided to come forward and attempt to hold the guilty parties accountable, I quickly realized that the current Students' Rights and Responsibility Handbook is completely inadequate to deal with situations of this nature due to the limitations on reportable offenses to the school. It is important to note, when discussing disciplinary procedure, Chapter Two, Section A of Regulation 2601.30P in the SRNR reads, "Students may also be disciplined for acts committed away from school property and outside school hours if conduct results in criminal charge or conviction." No restriction on the nature of the criminal charge is mentioned here or anywhere else in the SRNR. In fact, there is not an existing list detailing which offenses are non-reportable. However, these elusive limitations have shielded the perpetrators from consequences, resulting in continuing detrimental effects to my education, me being the victim. Cases similar to mine involving a crime committed by a student against another student pose a serious threat to the mental health of the victim when they are forced to remain within close proximity to the perpetrator in the school setting. It was nearly impossible to remove the two students, both with felony charges, from Woodson High School. Although we eventually succeeded in this endeavor, four months after the initial incident, it was not without a prolonged process that only increased the stress, confusion, and anxiety I was already dealing with as a result of the crime. Furthermore, when the third individual attempted to enroll at Woodson High School after being expelled from a private school, there was nothing in the SRNR to protect myself against the reality of attending school with my perpetrator. After an agonizing week of trying to find any possible loophole, he was finally convinced to choose another school by FCPS leadership. However, in the end, it was still his choice. While in this case, he made a favorable decision, in the future, another perpetrator could choose differently, and then there will be another victim who faces the terrifying reality I came so close to experiencing. I'm here tonight to use my experience to simply start a conversation. Yes, I am devastated that my life has been suddenly altered, and I was disappointed in those whom I consider my friends, and embarrassed that my body had been violated so severely, but I was equally devastated, disappointed, and frankly embarrassed in the school system that did not have measures in place to process and deal with offenses like this. I was told by my school's principal that my case was groundbreaking, and that it will become the precedent for similar cases in FCPS. I cannot help but think that if this conversation had been had earlier, and if the precedent had already been set, my experience would have been less traumatizing and painful, undoubtedly less exhausting. I think it is my responsibility to do everything within my power that we set the right precedent.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. We appreciate you coming here tonight. Ms. Tid?
My name is Jennifer Tid. My autistic verbally impaired son, Quentin, cannot speak for himself sadly. He suffered severe trauma being locked away in solitary confinement in a Fairfax County school over four-hundred times in three years. Those are only the documented incidents. I have no way of knowing how much time he spent locked away, and neither do any of you. I don't trust the data collection and reporting still, and likely never will. I keep hearing the refrain repeated by many in these meetings that behavior is communication, yet I don't think your responses to this human rights crisis in our county indicates anyone truly understands this. And the crisis is not data or branding problem for FCPS. The crisis is that there is no way you can humanely do something to another human being that is inherently inhumane. You know I'm furious, you know my terms, but in case I've not communicated my outrage or terms adequately, let me repeat them on record here tonight. I'm furious. My little boy was mentally tortured in solitary confinement cell for hundreds of hours at school. My terms are a total ban of seclusion and restraint to uproot a toxic system that makes these draconian practices necessary and to replace it with something that meets the needs of students screaming for accommodations not having been met. I've been out front of gatehouse offices for twenty-one days total of the four-hundred-and-thirty-seven days I intend to spend out there in observance of my son's suffering. At times, by myself, other times, more join me when they're able. I've received hundreds of notes from all over the United States and Canada of parents who feel as we do, and we are organizing, those who concur with the unilateral call by the ACLU, Amnesty International, CDC, World Health Organization, the UN, and Autism Self Advocacy Network for a total prohibition of these cruel, aversive methods used against disabled and minority children. I had the privilege of meeting autistic advocates, activists, at a rally in DC yesterday to protest the use of shock treatment against autistic and intellectually disabled people, and I wept as I heard their voices speaking of the unspeakable cruelty they endured in schools and residential facilities, experiences much like my son Quentin's. They explained to me what it feels like to be an autistic person, and I told them about my little guy, Q. It was a marvelous gift they gave me to let me climb inside his head and understand what it might feel like to be him. It occurred to me after this experience, with all the work sessions you've had on seclusion and restraint, all the teachers, administrators, school board members, PTA reps, special ed higher-ups at the table, has a single person at any of your meetings, or panels, or work groups been a verbal autistic person who could tell you, "I'm going to keep talking because my child was in seclusion for two-hundred-and-eighteen hours, and I'm going to finish," who could tell you the mental agony of what it's like to be treated like Pavlov's diagram school, to tell you what it's like to be managed rather than accommodated, to be locked up alone in a solitary confinement cell and held down by adults in painful forms of restraint? Let me tell you, with over sixteen-hundred incidents of restraint and seclusion, I'd bet my life that number is at least tripled. Many of whom I have spoken were afraid to be honest in fear of retaliation against their child. So, like the obscenity of this data crisis, surveys aren't getting all the voices you must hear at the table in this discussion. Without all the voices, you're erasing Quentin yet again, and every single person who isn't able to tell their pain in any other way. Quentin was naked more than once in his cell and not given clean, dry clothes to put back on for twenty to thirty minutes at a time. Quentin was forced to wipe up his own urine from his fight-or-flight trauma on numerous occasions. It's all in the reports, but FCPS never punished my child, right? They punished him for being autistic, and everyone who continues to prop up these practices is complicit in their pain.
Ms. Tid.
I'm going to finish. Thinking of a child as simply a behavior problem disposes you to think only of punishment. Thinking of a child struggling to handle something difficult like a disability encourages you to help them through their distress by accommodating their needs. These children have a right to a free and appropriate public education. Seclusion and restraint deny them of that right. Autism is not a behavior problem, it only becomes one when their needs are not met. Stop locking our kids up and start accommodating them. I'm not going away, and while Q can't speak, I can yell, and I intend to continue yelling until this abuse stops in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Tid. I now call on Mr. Tigner for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before, I hope everyone had a nice spring break, but I really wanted to thank all the speakers tonight. Regardless of why you came, it takes a lot of courage either to speak on your own behalf or on behalf of others. And specifically, I wanted to thank the two students tonight, Trey and Marie. Thank you so much for coming out. Student voice is important. What students think is important, what they go through is important. And every single time a student comes up here, I tell you, every one of the board members leans forward, and they're all listening, and it's important that you're here. I wanted to start off with my quick section about something that I tried out over the past thirty days, and it seemed, it's kind of like cliche if you're a teenager, but, you know, so I deleted social media, and I just wanted to see what happened. I don't know if anyone, like, has an iPhone, you can see in your phone how much time you spend, either looking at your phone pickups, different social media apps, and I realized I was losing, like, close to a full day every week just on social media. And it was kind of ridiculous. So, I deleted them, and just to see what happened, and I didn't get a full day back, but I did get a lot of time back, and a lot of lessons I've learned from it are very interesting, helped me realize that some of it isn't as important as I thought it was. So, I mean, if you are struggling with that, it'd be a really cool thing to try out. I wanted to talk a little bit about something I touched on last meeting, which is mental health screening for youth. First of all, I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz for their support on this. I will reach out to you guys in a little bit, it's been a little bit busy, but, and just to summarize, we are very blessed as a county to send out screenings to our students. I'm not sure about the exact occurrence of it, but it does come across students' desks, and they're screened for mental health issues, depression, suicide risk, and so on and so forth, and if they're flagged, they're talked to by a counselor. It's good, but it's not enough. There are hundreds of ways we can improve it. The questions can be improved, there are so many ways to slip through the little holes that you have to write your name on the top of it instead of your student ID, and it's a little bit uncomfortable to hand back a survey with your name on top of it to a teacher or anything like that, it's just a little bit unnerving at the same time. And no questions are addressed about anxiety, which is another issue a lot of students face as well. Also, there's just a couple of small things, but I look forward to discussion. I would love to involve other students and counselors from our schools. I would love to involve other students and counselors from our schools, and hopefully we can make some really nice tangible change on that. A very interesting, cool topic, especially for me to talk about, is the student rep election happened between the last meeting and this one, and the next student rep was elected for next year. Her name is Kimberly, and I'm telling you guys, you've got a good one for the next year. I swear, we saw, I saw like the 40 people up there, and I'm like, I want that one. So I was really happy that she made it through. If I can describe her in one way, it's, she's just real, you know, that's, you just connect to her as a human being, and that's absolutely invaluable, especially, especially from like a seat where you're presenting for the perspective of students, is that she brings her own perspective, and hopefully it's a unique one, and that you guys can benefit from it in the coming year. A very positive note is, school's coming to a close for a lot of people. Final exams are also coming up sadly. There's a lot of stress, but you can do it. At least for me, senior, I've got four weeks left, four and a half weeks, which is absolutely amazing, so I'm almost graduated, which I'm really happy about. So you're almost there, keep it up, and you'll be able to finish it. I wanted to also recognize a boy scout in the audience. We have Tobin Wilson, Troop 1128. Thank you for coming out. Sort of to final, a little bit of a personal note, I would love to take 30 seconds of your time. So I'm at like, it's prom this next Saturday for our school, and this is kind of funny. So I've been working the whole week on asking my girlfriend, because she's never been asked before, ever, to any dance at high school. So I've like created this whole elaborate scavenger hunt over like five days, and like Morse code, and like ciphers, and all coordinates, and crazy stuff like that. But right now, she's watching from home, and she's waiting for a clue, so I just have to say the clue for the next part. So the clue is shift cipher of five. So she has to figure out what that means, but yeah. Thank you guys all so much. Have a nice night.
Are we supposed to try to decipher the clue, Mr. Tigner?
You would need all the rest of everything.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. So now we have item 4.03, Regulation 2601, Student Rights and Responsibilities. I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Yes, we have Ms. Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent, who's going to go over the SRNR and provide a presentation. I want to remind you all that we will have a work session on the SRNR, so that there'll be a chance for some of the back-and-forth conversations around that, and we'll be highlighting tonight some of the changes that we're making to the SRNR. So thank you very much, and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So I think we've pretty opportunity to present the Student Rights and Responsibilities and our proposed changes for 2019, 2020. As you all are aware, these regulations are reviewed on an annual basis. We're going to start tonight with an overview of what our proposed changes will be, and what the changes that are going to be reflected this year. We're going to clarify and add definitions of aggravating circumstances, discriminatory harassment, marijuana, and SRO, School Resource Officer. We will align the SRNR with new legislation and changes to the Virginia Code. We will update the role of SRO to the description from the SRO MOU. We will clarify the behaviors which must be reported to the Title IX Coordinator, and also provide an intervention response for first-time marijuana possession. In the first slide, you'll see the proposed changes to the definitions of marijuana and School Resource Officer. There's a need to revise the definition of marijuana for the following reasons. One, we need to clarify that THCA and cannabidole oil, which I'll refer to as CBD oil, are not treat, are not to be treated as forms of marijuana. We also need to clarify that THC oil, not THCA oil, is considered a Schedule I substance and not the same as marijuana. I'll share more about that in the next few slides. In 2019, the Virginia State Legislation changed. If a student have a written, if a student has a written certification issued by a licensed practitioner, we are treating THCA oil as a prescription drug. That is, if a student has their own THCA or CBD oil in their possession on school property or at a school event, the principal will use a consequence similar to other prescription drug possessions. The proposed SRO definition you'll see noted on the slide. This language will be changed to align with the SRO MOU. The next two slides identify the proposed changes to the definition of aggravating circumstances and discriminatory harassment. The definition of aggravating circumstance was added by VDOE. The most important point to remember here for the change to the SRNR is that legislation now limits the number of days that a student in K through 3 can receive an out-of-school suspension, and the number of days that any student can be long-term suspended unless there's an aggravating circumstance. VDOE did not provide specific guidance about terms used within the definition. A group of representatives from school divisions across the state, including hearing officers, directors of student services, and similar positions, and groups from various advocacy groups, reviewed the definition and provided feedback. The second definition you'll note up there, the discriminatory harassment definition, has been updated to include classes that are protected in the code and FCPS anti-discrimination policy. The next slide represents legislative changes. I shared some information about THCA and CBD oil in the previous slide. THCA and CBD oil are compounds from the cannabis plant that have therapeutic potential and do not result in the user becoming high. Legislation passed in 2019 session allows school boards to treat these compounds differently than marijuana. The proposed SRNR includes possession and use of these compounds with authorization from a licensed provider under the provisions for prescription drugs. Additional information, in the code, as the code was updated during 2019, it now states that school boards are not required to suspend or expel students who are in possession of THCA or CBD oil with written certification for its use. The code also updated to prohibit vaping by students and adults, including visitors on school property. The SRNR already includes this prohibition for students. We received confirmation from the Fairfax County Police that due to the high concentration of THC and THC oil, it is now treated by police and the courts as a Schedule I drug, not as marijuana. Schedule I drugs are illegal because they have high abuse potential, no medical use, and severe safety concerns. They are the most dangerous, and potentially have the most severe psychological and physical dependence. Students who are found to be in possession of Schedule I substances will be referred to the Division Superintendent and may be charged with a felony. In the proposed SRNR, the THC oil will now be included in the Controlled Substance category and not in the same category as marijuana. As we've seen an increase in vaping, we've also become aware that some students are vaping THC oil, which can be very dangerous due to the high concentration of THC. The next proposed change refers to the role of SROs in schools according to the Fairfax County Public Schools and Fairfax County Police Department SRO MOU. This will provide clarity around the role of the SRO in schools as law enforcement officers who do not address routine school discipline matters and is not a member of the school administrative team. An SRO definition will be provided in the glossary of the SRNR, as well as the guide to parents in the front of the book. The School Resource Officer's primary role is that of the law enforcement officer. Unless there's a safety concern that cannot be addressed by FCPS staff, the school administrator may not involve the SRO in administrative actions, school discipline, questioning of students related to discipline incidents, and the SRO or other police officers may not be present unless safety concerns or the need for law enforcement expertise. To continue about School Resource Officers, for prohibited conduct, which also involves criminal offense, FCPS will defer conducting interviews with students when directed to do so by police. A direct link to the SRO MOU will be included in the SRNR Family Guide section for additional information. The proposed, this proposed change directs schools to report all allegations of sexual harassment and discrimination to the Title IX Coordinator. Existing footnotes were edited to clarify principal responsibilities, including the expectation that these are entered into the Bullying and Harassment Management System, and when appropriate, reported to the Title IX Coordinator. The proposed language for first-time marijuana possession is a significant change to FCPS's response to first-time possession. First, I'll review our current practices. The SRNR now states that students may receive an expedited review of their record by the Division Superintendent to determine if special circumstance warrant disciplinary action other than expulsion. Pending review, the student is assigned to an in-school suspension. If special circumstances are determined, the student receives a five-day in-school suspension, is assigned to the Alcohol and Other Drug Intervention Program for three days, and the suspension for 30 calendar days from school activities, student activities. If special circumstances are not found, the Division Superintendent shall hold a hearing to determine disciplinary action. Pending the hearing, the student shall remain in in-school suspension. This slide references the proposed change. In the proposed change, students would not be referred to the hearings office for first-time marijuana possession. The following consequences are being proposed. Two days of in-school suspension, participation in the Alcohol and Other Drug Intervention Program for three days, suspension for 30 calendar days from all student activities, and the parents are, would be expected to complete an online information session on prevention of substance misuse. This places an increased emphasis on education and prevention for both student and parent, and the new language provides clarity around what is meant by personal use, an amount consistent with individual personal use for a single occasion. This change would not include possession of THC oil or wax, which, as I mentioned before, is considered a Schedule I drug or a controlled substance. As additional follow-up, students will complete a substance use screening as part of the Alcohol and Other Drugs Seminar to determine the level of substance use. The students who indicate moderate to high use on the screener will be referred to the Community Services Board, or the CSB, and a virtual drug assessment by CSB can be arranged to further determine need for treatment. We hope those identified as early users can be referred to our new Cannabis Youth Treatment Groups, which we're hoping can be conducted by FCPS staff at schools. And lastly, identified school staff will follow up with the CSB contact. Questions have been raised about parent notification. The paragraph at the top of this slide provides the current requirement in the SRNR for administrators to make reasonable efforts to notify parents as soon as practicable, and before asking the student to write a written, to write a statement. A review of the records for 2018-19 by the hearings office indicates that this expectation has been met in over 90% of the cases referred to the Division Superintendent, but not in all cases. The need to adhere to this practice will be stressed in enhanced annual mandatory training about the SRNR for administrators, and specifically, SRNR training this summer will reinforce the need to notify parents through multiple means, such as phone or an email, and the need to delay asking for a written statement to give parent, time, parents' time to respond. At the work session, we will provide you with more information of what these practices and guidance may be for principals, and we will have the opportunity to go into more detail at that time. For our next steps, we'll have a work session on May 13th to address specific questions, and the SRNR is scheduled then for board action on June 6th. So, thank you. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. I have a number of board members who would like to ask questions. I'm going to start with Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I did want to alert board members, this won't come as a surprise to you, that I do plan to be talking with each of you about parent notification. As you know, I've been very concerned about the way parent notification has been implemented. It's, six years ago, we did a major review of the SRNR. We had a very lengthy conversation as part of an ad hoc committee, and we did make significant changes in 2013. One of the things we did was put in this language that you've outlined here, "As soon as practicable, a parent will be called." So, we have had six years of experience with that, and each time, we have seen cases where it has not been done properly. We have been told for quite some time, for six years actually, that it's a, it's not a matter of the language, it's a matter of training, it's a matter of getting the word out to administrators about what is expected. When you say 90% comply, I think part of that depends upon who is defining "as soon as practicable." And that therein lies the issue that I see. When we look at cases and we see, you know, this board looks at a number of discipline cases, and I see, to my eye, I see time after time after time where there was no dangerous situation where a student was brought in and where a parent should have been called right away, and informed that their student was in serious trouble, and it didn't happen. So I am looking, we drew a bright line six years ago with the written statement. We, we said, "You've got to try, try to get the parent." We didn't even say, "You have to get the parent." You don't have to find the parent, because if a parent just doesn't pick up the phone or doesn't answer a text, that can't be on administrators. But we did say that you have to try before they ask for a written statement. I've been very concerned that that bright line seems to be where the parents get called, as opposed to "as soon as practicable." As soon as practicable, and definitely not before a written statement. So I have been concerned about that. I understand that administrators have to keep order in their buildings. We all, we all agree that we have to keep our students safe, we have to keep our schools safe. But when there is no danger, and it's just a matter of getting through to the parent and saying, "Come here and be with your child," or at least know what's going on here, I, I see time after time when the parent could have, and to my mind, should have been called sooner. We're even seeing times where the people are asking students for their version of events, and they get a verbal statement, and then administrators write it down, and we see it. We then see it in the packet, so what is the difference between that and a written statement? That is a very thin line between asking for a written statement and asking for a verbal statement and writing it down for us. So I'm, I continue to be concerned. I'm struggling with the language, because I know, you know, our first priority is to keep our schools safe, but at the same time, we want to be fair to our students. So I'm going to have a conversation with all of you about where you see this, and hopefully all of you can help me write something that will tighten this up. I do think that our administrators are trying. I don't think that they are purposely violating the parent notification. I think a lot of it has to do with how we are defining it, you know, where that is. So I wanted to alert the board on that. Another amendment that I'm going to be working on this year has to do with students who have IEPs, and what happens when a student with an IEP is disciplined and is transferred out of their school and is transferred to another location. We are, we are told that the IEP team is the one that determines the placement, and I want to make sure that it actually is the IEP team, not just determining what kind of a program the student gets, but the actual location of the program, and, and also that the parent does have whatever input they feel they should have in that decision. If a parent has a preferred location for the student, I think that it's only fair that the IEP team fully consider that preference. That doesn't mean the IEP team will agree with the parent, but I do think that the parent has, is, knows their child best, and should, should be given credence on that. So I'm, I'm going to see if, one of the things, I think we need to be sure who it is that's making that decision, and that the parents have their involvement. So those, those are the two things that I'm working on now. The other question I have with the Title IX Coordinator, and I see you have, you have another definition of some, some more things that can be reported, or should be, or must be reported, to the Title IX Coordinator. We just heard- We just heard testimony here, some very disturbing and heartfelt testimony from Ms. Brennan. Would the kind of situation that she described be included in the kinds of things, or is that something that you could even tell?
So, I'm not familiar with the details, and I think it's something we definitely need to explore and have some conversation at the leadership level.
Okay. I would hope we would follow up with that student and find out more about that situation, and if what we're doing to, I think this is tightening up what we do now, or it's expanding what we do in terms of Title IX violations. I think that that would be good to find out if it would have dealt with the kind of situation. And I know we don't know the details of it with the mere three minutes that she had, but I would like to see us follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I now have Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I know we will have a work session. In fact, I'll be serving as one of the meeting managers, so I will certainly be conferring with our chair on the timing that's being allotted to it, because I think there are some good proposals here. And as Ms. Evans noted, many of us were serving on this board over six years ago when we did have the ad hoc committee that spent months and months trying to bring best practice to this school division. And Dr. Braybrand, you know this is an area of concern for a lot of us. We're not where we need to be. And so, one of the things that I do hope we'll have a chance to talk about in length is the Arlington County Public Schools Second Chance Program. What's being proposed here for the changes versus what many of us for more than six years, even before I joined the board, talking about, "Why is it that Arlington has a different program that's embraced by the court system, their county board supervisors, their school system, their courts, their police, their Commonwealth attorney, and it's been a program of success?" What's being proposed here isn't bringing us anywhere near that. Ms. Johnson, as I read the suggested changes, it's still focused on possession. It leaves the question of use as being treated like distribution. It doesn't give expedited review, it doesn't give a first-time offense consideration. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did have many conversations with the principals, and they still have concerns about the impact of use, and they do consider that a serious offense. And could I just add one thing? We do continue to work with the courts and the Commonwealth attorney and the CSB about moving forward with a, whether it's second chance or looks something like that. It is just taking us time to really put the program in place and to continue our conversations.
I know this isn't the forum for it, that'll be the work session, but Dr. Braybrand, I respectfully disagree. I've had years of conversation with the courts, and I continue to hear that the only pushback is coming from Fairfax County Public Schools. And I do understand and respect our principals, but maybe they should be talking to the Arlington principals, because Arlington Public Schools has had success. And if we don't help educate our principals, that Arlington has a program that works, it follows the research and best practice, this school division used to have possession and use were treated the exact same way, distribution was treated more severely. And when, actually Ms. Evans referenced the work we got from the ad hoc committee, I asked staff to draft language to reflect that, and staff separated out use and basically made it possession only for the first offense that we thought we were all voting on. So, I'm very concerned, again, Dr. Braybrand, that this continues to be a struggle. Ms. Evans is talking about the issue on parent notification. The proposal says that, you know, "As soon as practicable, before a student signs a written statement." Ms. Schultz, you've been a strong voice on this with Ms. Evans and I. We're talking about minors, so writing or signing a statement is hardly partnering with our families and their students. It means we already interviewed a minor. It means we already started talking to them about what is a suspendable or expellable offense, which, again, it's causing parents and students to be afraid of our school system, and I'm not overstating that. When this first happened, and we had real high-profile cases in the Washington Post, parents were literally circulating through the ACLU, thank you for nodding your head, Ms. Evans. Parents were circulating a form, asking and telling other parents, "Sign it and say that no school official may talk to your child for any reason without you being notified first." I don't want our school division to find itself with a second generation of parents doing that again, because we're not showing, in my opinion, a desire to partner with our families. More to come at the work session, but I can say this to my colleagues. We are blessed to live in a county where we have a Commonwealth attorney, we have a director of the juvenile court system, we have juvenile court judges like Judge Gail Carr, who've been looking at this issue, and also our police department under Chief Rossler. They look at us and can't understand why we're the ones holding back. We're the educational system, and frankly, we're the ones who are being too delayed in catching up to our county on what real diversion looks like.
I'd just like to share, this is not, I appreciate the comments that have been made thus far, and I know there may be other comments. I look forward to the work session. This is not a status quo SRNR. In my second year as superintendent, I am making changes to the SRNR with a focus on restorative justice, with a focus on intervention and prevention, on treatment. And I do believe we're moving in the right direction. I understand some board members want to move quicker, and I understand the idea of some board members of a policy passed six years ago. And I think the thing that I would explore and to continue to say, if we partner and we work, continue to work together, and I want that partnership. Six years ago, I think, when that passed, there wasn't, there was more of an us-versus-them narrative, frankly, I think, in the schools with the board, and that may have impacted the ability to have it done with the fidelity of implementation as necessary. The truth is, though, six years later, it really should be. And 90% is not 100%. So, part of what we're going to do is additional training, accountability for schools that continue to not be able to meet this guideline that we've done. And I do think we are starting to have the dialogues that we need with our practitioners to move us in the right direction. But I understand the urgency of some board members to want to do more, but this is not the same SRNR that we presented last year. We are beginning to take the steps to look, and Ms. Johnson has, to see that other school systems are making changes, and we are starting to make changes in FCPS.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
So, I couldn't agree more with my colleagues, Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin, on parental notification. We were the only, sadly, the only school board members to vote to protect students' rights with a parental notification when we first went through this. And I am going to put so many amendments on the table for this SRNR, it's going to make your head spin. So, let me just tell you, I am going to bring out my parental rights and parental notification, unless there is something gravely wrong, and boy, you're going to have to prove it, because I'll tell you what, we haven't been seeing anything that denotes why we're delaying notifying parents. You know, we just celebrated Law Day here, and touting that we're teaching kids about the First Amendment. What about the right to not self-incriminate as a minor, without the presence of a parent, where you are going to have the trajectory of your life altered? And we are not respecting the rights of students not to self-incriminate. And in fact, we're going so far as, it's not even just talking to them, it's having them write statements, it's having them say, "Hey, give me the password to your cell phone," and going into their cell phone and getting all the evidence we need to convict them before we ever call the parents. And that is a major, major problem. I've had that problem for years. We are, you know, part of a national problem, of a pipeline to prison, when we have this kind of mentality. You know who's caught up in the discipline process? Let me say it again, because I've said it a thousand times. They're boys. They're boys who are minorities, and they're boys who have a disability. 14% of the population, students with disabilities, 40% of the discipline statistics. We have a problem where we are not protecting the rights of students. And so, I'm going to want to see MDR notifications and justifications of why these were not associated with the MDR. I'm going to want to see, I mean, all of us can talk about this, and you can put your hand up or not, but I have the record from what we did last time, and every single one of those amendments, had we passed them, we would have protected the rights of students a lot more. And we've had principals come to the table, sit across the hall, or across the street, Principal Tim Thomas, one of them, who said, "You know what? You guys were right. You were right. We resisted. The principals resisted making some of these changes, and they have come to find that the schools are better run, that the students have higher rates of attendance, that they are more engaged when we do proactive work with them and do restorative justice, instead of have a punitive mindset." So, you know, I am, I'm not seven years into this, Ms. McLaughlin, you and I in particular are, you know, nine years, nine, two years before we were on the school board, you know, on a zero tolerance policy. And to still see things like, you know, I had amendments at the time, children under the age of 10, you're not going to write a statement. Students who have an intellectual disability or an emotional disability, we're not going to compel them to write statements. I mean, we're not there. Maybe you feel the baby step is comfortable. I'm pushing you out of your comfort zone with some amendments that are coming, and I'll be happy to discuss them at great length at our work session, but this is not, we're not there. We cannot be proud of, you know, teaching kids in one class about their rights and violating them at the same time.
Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Teresa, thank you for this presentation, and I know that you've worked hard, and you probably have heard some of our discussions when we've discussed these cases, and that's some of the frustration. I know that you haven't been there for all those discussions, but you're hearing some of the frustration, at least in my year and a half, that we've expressed, and not seeing the changes that have been asked for repeatedly in this is, I think, what a number of my colleagues are expressing. So, I wanted to kind of give you some perspective. From my perspective, I'm agreeing with my colleagues, and I'm having a basic problem, and that is, I don't see a tiered approach. And I'm receiving reports from people in the community. One particularly egregious to me was the suspension of several boys of color in third grade, where there was, as soon as they found out about a problem, those kids were suspended. I think we've got to do some education amongst our staff. I know we want to keep our kids safe. I know that we want to do the right thing. I know that we don't want things to get out of hand, but I also feel we have an obligation to understand that our primary goal is to educate, and we should be teaching kids to learn, to grow from their mistakes. And that is not what I'm hearing today. And so, I just fundamentally wanted to identify that, because that's what I was looking for, that's what I was listening to. The other thing that I want to talk about just generally, because I know we can go into details in the work session, is the whole idea about vaping. We, you know, we have the reports on where our schools are. There are a number of schools that have high numbers of vaping, and I'm not sure that our students really understand that these kinds of decisions can really change the trajectory of their education. And I think we've got some work to do to make sure that parents understand, that kids understand, but also how we respond to that has to understand the level of their ability to process that. I'm not sure I'm hearing that. So, I'll just leave that with the fundamental problems, because I'm looking to see how we can keep these kids in school, how they can learn from their mistakes, how we can keep our kids safe, how we can notify our parents, how we can come together collaboratively, because these kids, our students, are dealing with a changing group of tools that can really change what they're able to access in our educational system. So, I want to just give you generalities. Those are my primary concerns. I do agree with what my colleagues have said thus far, and I know that there's a focus that we all have. I certainly want to hear what the principals have to say, but we have some culture change, I believe, that we've got to focus on. And so, I think it's going to take a significant effort, hopefully not a thousand amendments, but certainly, I just don't see this going in the direction that I'm comfortable with.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. I have Mr. Tigner, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I heard you talk about conversation at the leadership level, and that is exactly what we need more of, and not just conversation, because of course, it goes on day in, day out about many things, but the difficult conversations need to be had. When I look at the list of changes at least proposed, and of course, amendments and so on and so forth, that'll happen, it's like changes to definitions and updating the title and these sorts of things that, I mean, they take a lot of work, and it's not to undermine what has been done, but a lot of difficult questions I don't think really have been tackled as much to the extent that I'd like them to be, at least. And regardless of if they have been or not, because I'll admit, I'm totally in the blind of what has been talked about, I really, really, really commend you guys and push you guys to bring in students and talk to them. What they want, what they feel, what they hear, what they go through, what they experience, it could be a small thing. You just pull in and ask, go to superintendent advisory council even, or go to a few of them and just pull them in and pose a few questions. "How do you feel about how your school handles vaping? How do you feel about how your school handles any drug use? How do you feel about how your school handles or the administration to student relationship?" And just give them 10 minutes to talk with somebody. And we've had discussions as students with our assistant superintendent, Mr. Tyson, I don't know if he's here today, but we had, it was just, I think, 10 of us from our district with him, and we had an hour conversation about all these things, and we got so passionate, all these different students, and we threw so many ideas at him, and you know what we found out? It's that we often agreed. And we come together, but it creates a unified force, and the students and administration and the upper-level leadership level, all that kind of stuff, we can come together and sort of present a unified approach to improving SRNR. Just make sure and clue people, please follow up with the case that was presented tonight, and hopefully by talking to students, more cases can be presented to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tigner. Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. McAlveen.
Thank you. I have a suggestion that I think might help us in our discussion regarding parent notification, because having, you know, been through lots of these discussions before. I think, on the one hand, if there is a serious event that occurs right in front of everybody's eyes, you know who to call. There's no question. And certainly, one would expect that immediately, the phones, you know, you're calling parents and, because you've seen it, it's right there. I think an interesting discussion would be, what are the guidelines for investigating rumors, for investigating suspected problems, but you're not sure? How do we, as school board members, expect administrators to investigate? If a student comes to us and says, "There is a report that we think this has occurred," and then you don't, for the administrator, they don't know if they have a problem. And we certainly expect that a parent to be called immediately if it appears that their kid may be in really big trouble. But, I think that might help to clarify our expectation for very quick parent notification, but I think in guidance to administrators, because we certainly want, you know, robust training so that they know they really have to call. But, when is that point? How do you investigate and actually meet this? But I think that might help our discussion, so we can-
Thank you.
-have a better idea, a better guideline of, okay, you get to this point and it's time to call. But, you know, if a 10-year-old student comes to you and says, "I think this has happened. I've heard it." Obviously, something has to be investigated. So at what point do you come to that? Speaking, Ms. Keys-Gamara was just talking about jeweling and vaping. I am hearing lots of concern from parents. I am very concerned that this is way out beyond our control at the moment. And I'm hearing from parents that the vaping with the nicotine pods, it is so concentrated, and the kids are addicted so fast. And parents are distraught, and the kids are being addicted just very, very quickly. And what are we going to do? How are we going to address it? Multiple suspensions of 30 days from, you know, whatever. That was always our response to smoking cigarettes. Well, it's not smoking cigarettes anymore. It is ingesting a sweet-smelling, perfumed, concentrated oil of nicotine. So we have that problem. And we know that we have 18-year-olds who are going out and buying it in quantity and then selling it. And the kids say it's very easy. And then the question with the marijuana, I think we have very quickly moved beyond, you know, the pipe with the little residue in it or the little baggie. It's now in a pouch. And it's a Schedule I felony. And I don't know what we're going to do about that. But that's a serious issue. I mean, we are all sworn to protect the laws of the state. And I don't think they're ever going to legalize for anybody hash, because that's what it is. And when I talk with parents and kids, I say, "Do you understand what's in that pod?" And they're taken aback. They had no idea that that is the concentration. So, and the other question, the other concern that I have with that, who is producing that? You can get it in the mail, by the way. And is that going to be cut with something else? It's a very dangerous problem that all of a sudden is right in front of our nose, and I think it's huge. I have no solution to it. I am very, very concerned. And I have parents in my community that are just beside themselves. So, as we go through the SRNR, I think we're looking at a very different landscape on nicotine abuse and marijuana abuse. And it's very dangerous. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. McAlveen, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just to follow on, since Janie was on this topic of vaping, I do think that Mr. Tignor has a point. He's no longer the deus. But I think the students do have a better perspective on this issue and how we can best respond to it. I know there have been discussions of a public relations campaign of some sort. And I know there are efforts underway with that. I think the best place to target them, frankly, is in the bathrooms. And one of the campaigns that's been very successful, at least on college campuses, is to put public relations information in the stalls and where people are actually going to smoke. And tell them not only about the consequences for punishment, but the consequences for their health and their life. So, I do think that's one thing we can consider doing moving forward. And I do think it's the number-one problem that we are going to confront is the school system. And I think we need to treat it that way and put as many resources behind it as possible. And I think there are many constituencies that are willing to stand up and help. And I think we would be surprised at the number of students that actually speak out on the issue. The second and final thing I wanted to touch on is, last year, the board made some transformative changes to our dress code. I have heard, frankly, zero complaints this year about the dress code. I know we had some issues with the publication of the document last year and that the changes actually weren't initially incorporated. I do want to ask, though, if, as staff has looked it over, if they think there are further things we might look at and what those might be, if any.
So, Mr. McAlveen, we have not heard much at our office about dress code. So, I'm happy to go back to my staff. We have not had conversations about it since we initially had some concerns at the beginning of when the regulation was first changed. So I'm happy to take it back to the staff, so we can discuss.
Okay, great. I mean, I don't think it was perfect last year, so I think there's always progress to be made. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Johnson. The first question I have actually has to, relates to one of our outstanding speakers tonight. And I guess, one question I have with regards to the changes to the SRNR, does the proposed SRNR now protect the victim in the situations Ms. Brennan described?
I think we're going to have to continue to look, what was shared tonight was very powerful. And you heard that FCPS did intervene even beyond what the parameters of the SRNR did. And we're going to have to look at what is appropriate to embed in the SRNR to address something that, at least for me and our senior staff, was new territory, which is true, what she said.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't have the answer tonight, but I can certainly review it with our legal folks and see if there's some additional way to express in the SRNR the concerns that were addressed.
Yeah, I think, given her testimony, I think we absolutely have to, as a school community, think about that sort of scenario and protect the victim. That, I wasn't necessarily expecting a yes. I just wanted to make sure that this was highlighted and we could talk about this at the work session. I think Mr. Tignor actually hit on an extremely important point, which is that we have to be in contact with our students, particularly our high school and middle school students about the vaping issue. I am in my, I think, year 13 of having a high school student in Fairfax County Public Schools. And I can tell you that, from the reports that I received, the bathrooms smell a lot better than they used to. And that's because of jeweling. And the hallways as well. And so, it is a situation that I think is pervasive and quite alarming when you think about the potency of some of the oils that children are ingesting. And I believe that, actually, Ms. Strauss pointed out, the nicotine addiction issue, which is as real as the THC issue as well. I mean, I know as a child of a chain-smoking father, and I can tell you how difficult it was for him to give up smoking, which he ultimately succeeded in doing. But the, it's my understanding that the Juul packet is far more potent than the pack of Marlboros my dad was probably carrying around in high school. So, this is a serious issue, and I think you've heard it reflected from a number of my colleagues here tonight. I think also, with regards to students, in the legal world, there's an adage that says, you know, ignorance of the law is not a defense. But I think that Ms. Keys-Gamara pointed out appropriately that we have to recognize that these are students. We can't apply that sort of standard to these kids. We have to be sure that they understand the consequences and exactly how they're going to be treated. In some of the situations that we've dealt with, I've talked to parents, they are blindsided about the situation involving their child, particularly in the first-use marijuana situation or THC oil. So, with regards to that, I just wanted to make sure I understand the law and how it's changed. I think on Slide 4, it talks about, and maybe we could bring that up, it talks about THC oil and an allowance for, if there's a prescription. But it seemed to sweep in THC oil and THCA or cannaboidal oil. But it looked like later in the slides, the THC oil is treated differently.
So there's a difference between the THC oil and THCA and CBD. So the THC oil is the, what they're smoking, students might be smoking in the pods or in wax. The THCA and the CBD oil is more of the therapeutic that doesn't cause the high. The law changed to support this, we no longer are required to expel a student if they have a written prescription from a licensed practitioner.
So-
If it's THCA oil or CBD oil.
So a student could not get a prescription for THC oil?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So, and could you, could a student at school using a Juul, for example, have either THC oil or THCA oil?
I'm going to say yes, because this is the prescription-
Right.
-essentially, that students would have. However, the change in our SRNR is that we'll be treating that as a prescription, like a prescription drug.
Was your question THC oil versus THCA oil?
Yes, I think that's right.
But your question was, could it be, the THC-
You have reinforcements coming.
Sorry, I know this is getting a little bit technical, but I guess where I'm driving to is-
Do you understand the question?
Where I'm driving to really is-
I do understand the question, I think.
Okay, yeah.
THCA, we will have to check and see how that's administered. I do not believe it's administered in a Juul.
Or a vape.
Or a vape, or anything like that. And so, there will not be a confusion when we have a kid who has a vape or a Juul or whatever device that they are using, that it might be THCA oil.
So, would we be testing the oil to see whether it's THC? Well, I know there is a test that can be a rapid test-
The police would be testing. We would not be testing.
So I guess that's where I'm going. So we would then be involving the SRO to perform the test.
As we do now.
That's what we do now. So in those situations, even though we've got the changes to the SRNR on, let's think it's Slide 12, in situations where we suspect, I guess, maybe not even suspect, we would always test the oil to determine if it's THC oil? And that would bring in the SRO into the process, even in the first-time possession?
So, possession of THC oil is a felony. So it would be something that would involve the police. And possessions, drug offenses have to be reported to the police.
But how would the school administrator know prior to the test?
They would not know, but they would turn it over to the police, because it would be suspicion of a crime.
Okay. So in all of those cases, then, we will be bringing in the SRO at that point in the process to make sure to test.
Right, but again, THCA oil, you have a prescription. You have, you would, in the same way that you would bring in some, a form to the school to say, "My kid needs to take this medicine," you would have a form that says, "My kid needs to use this oil." So that situation is not going to get conflated with the THCA or, I mean, the THC oil that they are using in a vape or similar.
And so, in that situation, so if they're using it in a Juul, we presume that it's THC oil, which is not the kind that you can get a prescription for. So the SRO becomes involved, conducts a test, determines that it's THC oil. Then what happens in that scenario with this first-time possession student?
They're not considered eligible for the first-time marijuana, you stay at your-
Because it's too, because the potency is too strong?
Because it's considered a controlled substance. And in the SRNR, there's a whole section of what happens when it's a controlled substance.
Yeah, and I think this is just highlighting what I'm talking about, which is, I think this is going to require an education program for our students to understand what it means and what the consequences are. Because they're, I think that most folks would think, you know, marijuana is marijuana, and whether it's an oil in my Juul, or whether or not it's the, you know, the butt I got in my pocket, it's the same, right? And that's just not what we're doing. We're treating them very differently.
Mr. Wilson, I really appreciate the level of detail you're taking this down.
Yeah.
We will have a work session on May 13th, and we are going to make sure we have time for that, as well as, we are not going to be voting on this until June 13th. So we will have a number of opportunities to go into this in greater detail.
I appreciate your mindfulness of time, Madam Chair. And I just think, in advance of our work session, it is important to highlight the questions that need to be followed up and get the staff started to answer questions, because the SRNR is just too important of a document to decide. We can't dive into the weeds a little bit here on this presentation.
So you raise a really important point there, Mr. Wilson. And I would encourage all of my colleagues that if you have specific questions, similar to how we handle budget, that we should send those specific questions in advance, as well as, you know, I welcome the conversation at the table. But I think that it would be helpful to staff to have a bit of a heads-up as to what will be inquiring.
And I don't mean to, I'm not trying to put staff on the spot here, nor do I feel like they're feeling that way. But I do think that it's important that the public hear questions that relate to their own children and that it not just be packaged in an email set of questions to staff that the public can't see. Thank you.
So, Ms. Pouchak, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. And knowing that we will have a work session for further review, I did have a couple of things that were touched upon that I wanted to, had a couple of thoughts to share. The first one, I do want to thank Ms. Brennan for sharing tonight. And I know it took a lot of courage, and we really appreciate that. And I'm very sorry that you had to go through that. I know our team, Dr. Banek, or Dr. Banek, and Mr. Foster acted in principle very swiftly to try to address an issue that had not been addressed before. I guess as we look at possible SRNR reviews, my understanding is, some of that also may require state legislative changes. So if that is the case, if you could bring those to us, I know the sooner we have any recommendations for next year's General Assembly, the easier it is to incorporate those. And so I hope we can see both SRNR for us, but also any state code that would require change. Regarding the jeweling, I know my, actually, my student rep, that was his forum topic, I know, I don't think it went forward, but I've heard, we've heard from a few students, some innovative ideas they have. And so I guess my question would be, I think, like a public campaign is helpful, but our students, I think, as we've said, they know better than we do in a lot of ways what works, what's going to really help both sticks, carrots, et cetera, to help address this problem. So, I know it's not an easy thing, but I would love us to start to think about perhaps, I don't know, hackathon style or a contest, whether it's school-based, that really tries to bring forward, they have some technological ideas I've seen, you know, shared with us, and some other solutions. This is a huge issue that is, we know, feeling a little overwhelming right now, how do we really address it? And so, if there are other, or other systems have created ways to really engage students and help them have input and possible solutions to try out, I hope we can look at that. For the parent notification, sorry, before I get there, listening to Mr. Wilson, I appreciate that. It is very confusing, right, the different kinds of THC oil, et cetera. So it seems to me, one word that would be extremely helpful in the SRNR would be prescription versus non-prescription. I think if we can really start to differentiate, you know, what is now within the legal code and when prescribed and associated with a prescription, you know, is acceptable versus what is not and what is not a legal substance. So as we go through the SRNR, I hope we can incorporate that. And then finally, and then I apologize if anyone did bring this up, and I hear my colleagues, and I agree, as we talk about parent notification, but also our students, right? We don't have Miranda rights for our students, right? We don't have anything like that. So I guess I'm wondering, and if I've missed something, if when a student is approached, is there at least something in paper that we can share so that it's clear to them and also to parents? This is what you can expect when you're approached, either by administration or an SRO related to discipline. This is appropriate. These are your rights, these are your responsibilities. I don't know if we've looked at that before, or if it's something we've considered. But I think being able- I think being able to, to be clear about, because students look at the SRNR at the beginning of the year, probably 99% of that information is not in their heads when, when an incident occurs. So, just a few thoughts for our work session. Happy to put something in writing if it's necessary, but I appreciate, I know this is a baby step, and we want to go a little farther, and we want to do it cautiously. So, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchak. Mr. Moon?
Okay, I, I am not gonna, you know, ask any questions regarding a specific changes or a particular proposals I may come up with at this point in time, but I, I would rather, at this point in time, ask some questions and make suggestions regarding logistics of how we're gonna come to a, a true, you know, board action on June 6th, as proposed. Isn't June 6th?
June 13th is what I have on my...
June 13th is the work session, and June 6th is actually...
No, May 13th is, May 13th is the work session, June 6th.
Oh, I have a typo here, I'm sorry.
Okay, but somehow, my calendar shows graduations on June 6th.
That's why it was June 13th, because we moved the, um...
It's the June 13th, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, so, because we still had June 6th on presentation.
I'll need to fix that, that's correct.
Okay, so with that in mind, with that in mind, you know, May 13th, the work session, that's all the work session schedule, I take a quick look of a chair's note about the particular day's schedule, you know, based upon what has been suggested by my fellow board members, that we're required, we'll be needing a lot more time than what is in there at this point in time. So, so, for, in that regard, I'm, I'm gonna be asking, I'm asking my board members to set aside for their own schedule enough time on that day, so that we could have a fuller discussion, and as proposed, changed through SRNR. And secondly, I also know that there will be a couple of meeting managers preparing for this work session. Their meeting managers' meeting schedule is, as I look, just look at it, is on May 1, May 1st, so next week.
Yes.
And I bet that meeting managers will be, try to incorporate all different suggestions coming from board members as to how to manage this work session. Even though, as the chairman Corbin Sanders stated, that we still have a time between May 13th and actual board action, and June 13th, but with all the graduations in the mirror, and some other, you know, board meetings, including, you know, budget meetings, budget action, et cetera, I do not know whether we can put in more than one additional work session before we get to June 13th. And, and, and questions could be, you know, to superintendent and staff members, that in the past, you know, based upon my own experience, when board members require more time to discuss, pushback was, or the limitation was, you know, we have, we need to print this, we need to translate this, so we have, we have, you know, we need to have all this ready before the opening of the school, opening day of the school in August, whether we'll be able to talk. So, so at the next work session, I, you know, superintendent should be able to let us, need to let us know when the drop dead deadline for our action is, so that, so that, you know, board members all know what to do prior to that deadline. And also, as the meeting managers have a discussion next week, that, you know, some of the suggestions from the board members seem to indicate that, I mean, I will include myself in that request, that we perhaps need to have the presence, participation by principals, in having some discussion, you know, principals could bring to board members' attention of, you know, their perspective, you know, their challenges, but board members also be able to share as elected, elected representatives of how we see the changes, and what, how, you know, what sort of changes need to be bring, need to be brought to our SRNR. So, again, we need to have much more time than what's been reasonably planned for May 13th, and also give us a drop dead deadline, so that we can plan, you know, board members could, could plan accordingly, and making a request to meeting managers to, you know, potentially invite a principal to join us.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I'm going to take chair's privilege and have a couple of comments. I do agree with my colleagues who raised the questions about parental notification and needing to strengthen that. I also think that we need to have a comprehensive, not only how we address vaping in our SRNR, but how we are going to address vaping in our health curriculum, in our, in a multi, you know, a, a campaign to better educate not only our students, but the families, on what is becoming an epidemic across the United States with vaping. It is not just unique to Fairfax County Public Schools. And the concern is that not only are there the addictive tendencies that I thank Mr. Wilson for going into great detail, because it is important to understand, but there are also physical health impairments caused by vaping because of the impact on the lungs. And so, I do think that that is something that we should start as part of a conversation with the SRNR, but it will probably take a broader conversation than just the SRNR. The other thing that I wanted to raise, there are two. One is, you removed the reference to peer mediation. On one of your slides, you noted that it's been removed, so that it focuses purely on restorative justice. And I was a little surprised by that, because there are, they serve two very different functions in my mind. And so, my question is, why didn't we just add in restorative justice versus removing the peer mediation?
So, we've, we've had restorative justice in the SRNR for a number of years. The reason peer mediation was removed was because, well, sort of for two reasons. Very few schools at this point are training kids to do peer mediation. It was a class in some schools, it was an after-school club in some schools, it had different ways that it was implemented. And even when it was at its peak, very rarely, because our, our student schedules don't have study halls, or periods during the day when they could not leave class, but be mediators, we have never really implemented a peer mediation program. That was a response to a disciplinary thing. We have been using peer mediation for some minor-level conflicts. The kids have been learning very good peer mediation skills, but in terms of utilizing as a disciplinary response, it's gotten less and less and less. And, you know, sort of having to pick and choose what we can do from central office in terms of training people and bringing people along, we've had such a thrust forward in, in restorative justice, that that's what the time of my staff has been spent doing, to train people to understand what restorative justice was, et cetera. I understand they are two different things. We, you know, 15, 20 years ago, were definitely a model in the country about what we were doing with peer mediation, but really, over time, schools just couldn't find the time to, to keep the program going.
I appreciate that. I would like to have a bit, a bit more information on this, because my concern is that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater concept, that because we feel there's a resource constraint, then we had to choose between the two, but because they serve two very different needs, and it's my understanding that peer mediation has been a best practice, not only here in the past, but across the country. And the skills that are built by our students with peer mediation are skills that are not only important for resolving conflicts in the immediate future, but they're lifelong skills. And so, I just think that we might want to reconsider that a bit. And then, the last question that I have is really, or comment, is a comment about what happens when a child gets into trouble? We tend to take them out of the classroom, and we go through our process of dealing with the discipline issue. Meanwhile, the child is out of the classroom. And so, I would like to, at our work session, have a deeper conversation about what we can do to address the academic needs, not remove the child from the classroom unless they pose a real, serious risk to others, so that their education isn't interrupted. And most importantly, before we, I end my comments, I want to express my great appreciation, Ms. Brennan, for you coming here tonight, and bravely telling us your story, and encouraging us to take action. We needed to hear your voice, and we so much appreciate it. And we will do what we can to address your concerns. I do have one go back, and then we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you.
I have two now.
I had, I had wanted to go back, because we, we have been raising the concerns about vaping and Juuling for many years now. In fact, I've got dated emails to our interim superintendent, Steve Lockhart, that are well over two years old, where we had implored him to please help FCPS be a leader on what is a national problem, but to take a treatment and intervention approach, not a punishment approach. And I am continuing to receive calls from families that unfortunately, as our schools grapple with what is a very serious problem, how to walk that tightrope of accountability, and we are erring on the side of punishment, we are not erring on the side of treatment and intervention. Vaping and Juuling, as has been noted by other board members and noted in the national media, it, it is high concentrations of nicotine, and it is creating addictions. It is happening to some of our youngest students at the high school level. And my concern is that we asked two years ago to come at this from a treatment and prevention approach, and we're not there. I'm not seeing anything proposed here, Dr. Brabran, to become more robust in what we're doing. So, you know, I do look forward to being the meeting manager, and figuring out, like, how are we going to tackle this? I don't want to go another academic year where principals feel like they're not sure how to treat them. And, you know, we've got a few alcohol substance abuse counselors now embedded in our schools, but it's new, and I think that a lot of our principals aren't necessarily sure how to utilize and take advantage of that, but I'm hearing good things from families when they are connected, but it's taking too long to connect these students and their families. So, I, I wanted to really make sure that point was made tonight, and to my colleagues, that it's all going to be in how we approach this. Montgomery County, as I've put in an email weeks, if not months ago, is showing efforts to do this from an inter, a treatment intervention, and we need to be doing the same. The other thing is, I too wanted to express my appreciate, appreciation to Ms. Mari. Brennan, your, your bravery tonight, your willingness to come bring your courageous voice to be able to help us, to help future students, is a courage that countless students will certainly benefit from. And so, I want to thank you for, for coming and, and sharing your, your experience and your concerns, and continue to help us as we make some refinements to the SRNR as well, and perhaps doing some lobbying at the state level on things that we may need to do from there. So, continue being strong, and continue on your journey of healing, and let us know how we can support you along the way. And then, finally, I just want to say, Dr. Brabran, that you've been hearing a lot about parent notification, and when do we intercede, and how do we keep our schools safe? And Ms. Strauss mentioned the whole point about how do we investigate rumors and things like that. I think that's a perfect example of where parents are feeling a breach of trust. If, unless it's imminent danger, unless we have caught a student doing something that is creating imminent danger to the school environment, then there is time to be able to contact the parents. And especially if it's that there are rumors being heard. And for years, what I, what the pushback has been is, well, we need to get these kids to confess, and when the parents get involved, they're not going to confess. And so, you know, Ms. Pouchak, I appreciated you were at least bringing up the question of, do we, or why don't we have Miranda rights for kids? We live in a country that believes in Miranda rights. The police would love to be able to do what they can to interview people and get them to self-incriminate, but that's not how the United States justice system works. And I'd like to see us as a school system say, just as much as we respect, again, law, that we were celebrating, you know, and honoring tonight, well, what does our judicial system say about rights?
Ms. Schultz?
I'm not sure why we're applauding baby steps. We're supposed to be a premier school system. I, you know, I, I'm sorry if that's an offensive statement, but where's the boldness? Where, where is the opportunity to be a leader? You know, we're foot-dragging years later behind a premier school system. What's the recidivism rate, Ms. McLaughlin? 90% is non...
And Arlington, 90% don't recidive.
Non-recidivist. We know, they're right next door. Our special education student population is bigger than their entire school population, and somehow, they figured it out. And we're, I, I, you know, I'm not going to applaud timidity. Our, our kids are suffering, you know, and, and long ago, I said, you know, the discipline process has a constituency of one at a time. But when it hits you, it hits a family like a ton of bricks, like a ton of bricks. And sometimes justice has meted out, and sometimes it's not. And if it's not, you are, you are on the short stick, and have had the trajectory of your life changed. And so, you know, whether it's vaping, you know, we've talked a lot about that tonight. The, the thing is, is that the kids are vaping because they're self-medicating. It's just another tool. So, on the one hand, we say, we need mental health professionals, we need school psychologists, we need clinicians, we need, you know, crisis intervention, we are adding SOSAs, we're, we're doing all of this stuff, and the budget balloons, and yet, you're gonna turn around, and you're gonna nail a kid the first time he makes a mistake, the first time he gets caught, and well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna parse it, we're gonna thread the needle between possession and, well, he used it. Okay, well, let's just swing down the guillotine, and march him out the back door to, you know, alternative education that costs three, and four, and five times the rate of keeping them in school if we had just done intervention, if we had just been a thought leader in the education process, which is what we're supposed to be in the first place. You know, I mean, Ms. McLaughlin, it's two and a half years ago that you and I put together extensive material for senior leadership, and, and it's not just, you don't have problems with lungs, okay, so you don't have lungs, and by the way, nobody knows how THC, there's no THC oil, you don't reload Juuls, all of that, we don't even know what we're talking about. You know, thank you, Benny, by the way, you've made the most sense tonight, in that talking to the kids is how you figure this out. They know who's doing it. The, what is the mechanism by which we're gonna create an ability for the kids to go, hey, you know what, that guy, he's the problem guy in our school. He's the one, if you got that person out, 90% of it would go away. We're not creating problems, or solutions to the problems with the students, we're creating them at the students, and on the students, and around the backs of the parents. So, I, I'm sorry, but I, I am fired up, because I, I feel like this is the 400th time we've had this discussion, and we are inching along, and we're not making any substantive change. We're, we're eking along, and we don't want to offend the principals, you know, and a lot of the conversation happens with the principals first, and what came here was a conversation with the principals? No, have the conversation with the students, have the conversation with the teachers, have the conversation with the parents, and then bring forward something that says, okay, we're gonna move, you know, miles ahead. something that says, okay, we're going to move, you know, miles ahead, not, you know, toe into, you know, the shallow end of the pool. And frankly, I want to see a little bit of, you know, ire on the part of my colleagues, because every day we don't get this right. Every time, you know, we talk about adding people to the hearings office and adding people in counselor positions, and we have crisis responses, and I get another call about another kid who is, you know, in another hospital or far worse. You know what? That family has been permanently altered. We have permanently separated a child from their family by lack of intervention and lack of boldness. And I want to see some boldness on the part of staff and a part of this board to demand of staff that we move forward instead of this leviathan approach to punishing, 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 punishing children who are in one of the most stress and oppressive environments.
So Ms. Schultz, I really --
I know. I know we have a long night. We've been here for a long time. But sometimes this stuff just needs to be said plainly. We need to do better.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Johnson, thank you very much for your presentation. And we look forward to continuing this discussion on the 13th of May. And I, as you can see tonight, it's going to be a robust discussion. So I will encourage my colleagues that if you have specific questions or you need additional information in advance of that session, please send them, send along your questions and your comments. I think that will help in making it a fuller discussion. So I now, we did not take any action during closed session. We will be going back into closed session after this meeting. I remind my colleagues of that. And so we will go to the motion to amend the 2019-2020 calendar, and I call on Ms. Palchek for the motion.
Sorry, give me one second. I do have the motion. But are we able to bring up the changes, the change calendar? Okay, perfect. So I move that the school board adopts the revised 2019-2020 standard school year calendar.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I will try to speak briefly. And just to clarify, while we did have a conversation earlier this evening, a work session for the 2020-2021 calendar, this is a separate issue here for the 2019-2020 calendar, which is next year. It was initially approved at the school board's June 28, 2018 regular meeting. Here, we're looking at a revised 2019-2020 calendar. It's being submitted for approval, and we discussed it at a previous work session due to two factors. One is recent state legislative changes for the opening of school prior to the Labor Day holiday. Specifically, the Friday prior to Labor Day must now be a holiday. State legislation went through this year that no longer requires a waiver in order to begin before Labor Day, but it does require school districts such as ours that had a specific kind of waiver to be closed on the Friday before Labor Day as well as Labor Day. And so here, you can see on this calendar, the change was made to close on that Friday before Labor Day. It is now a student holiday. And I will go through a few of the other changes. Additionally, the revised calendar includes a proposal to move the March School Planning Day that was originally scheduled on Friday, March 14, I believe, I can't read it, to March 3, 2020, in order to accommodate the 2020 presidential primary. In past years, we, and for the last presidential primary, we did end up closing as an emergency in order to ensure that our students were safe and that all citizens had the ability to vote freely and access their voting places. And so those are two minor changes in order to do the change in March. But it also means that, it's very small, but October 4, I believe, which used to be a teacher work day, is now a regular student day. And the last Friday for teachers, I can't read what day that says, August 18? Is that what?
Thank you.
No, so I'm trying to -- thank you. Thank you. So the October 4 used to be a teacher work day. It is now a regular student day. And the work day was moved to Friday, August 16, as an optional work from alternate location for teachers. And finally, we have a student holiday on Friday, oh, August 30. So there's two changes. They are in red in this calendar. And I do want to remind our board that we previously discussed this as the easiest ways to be able to address the two required changes for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly. Ms. Palchek described it very, very well. So my only additional comment will be, because this is coming up, we will need to communicate this to parents, probably several times, to make sure that they understand that their student is going to be off school on August 30. But their student will be at school on October 4. They will be off school on March 2, but they will be going to school on March 13. For parents and for students, those are the key points of communication. So I do think that we need to get that out probably several times, just to be sure, because we have already advertised the other calendar quite a bit. So we just need to clarify that. But these are good changes. In one case, it was a necessary change. And in the other case, it certainly makes sense to have students out of the building when we have a presidential primary. And so I think these were good fixes. So I hope the board will support them.
If I may, Ms. Corbett, thank you for the reminder. I do believe there will be a, now a fridge-friendly version, we're calling it, in order to also help communicate. That will be a listed version of all the major dates, when students are in school, when school year ends, when students are out of school, et cetera. So I believe Dr. Nixon and her staff will also be sharing that.
That's right. So once the vote is made this evening, Mr. Drager will make those changes and post it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Brabran, you have your light on? Oh, he's not even there, so never mind. Seeing that I don't see anybody else wanting to speak, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the new calendar. And that is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table, and that's it. Okay, so that motion passes. I now call on Mr. Moon for a motion on the Goal 3 report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the strategic plan Goal 3, premier workforce report, as detailed in the agenda item.
I second the motion. And seconded by Ms. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam Chair. Our strategic plan, Ignite, has four overarching goals, and they are student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. On March 7, 2019, the school board approved a streamlined strategic plan with eight areas of focus for school years 2018 through 2020. These areas of focus have specific strategic actions to move the division forward toward its goals. Each strategic action has a targeted metrics to show the division's current baseline data, an interim target to achieve by school year 2020, and an inspirational statement that describes what success would look like for students, families, employees, and the community. The school board is to receive yearly reports to assess the division's performance in achieving its targets. This is the first report under the new reporting structure. Under Goal 3, which is premier workforce, we have a community investing in our employees, encouraging innovation and celebrating success. And there are two areas of focus for this year, school years 2018 through 2020. First is FCPS will recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees. And second, FCPS will offer market competitive compensation packages. The report details the division's performance in school year 2017 and 18 as it relates to the revised metrics in the strategic plan. The school board hold a presentation of the report at its regular meeting on April 4, and then had a work session on the April 8. And I am seeking my colleagues' support.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I think it's very important. This is a much more detailed report. I think it enhances, again, our strategic plan, lays out very specific targets, metrics, progress towards our goals. It is very descriptive and detailed. And again, our two large overall goals are to recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees and offer market competitive compensation packages. But I think this report gives us a good roadmap as to how we're going to hold ourselves accountable and go forward with this. And I would like to thank the staff who worked on this, Marty Smith, and then Sean McDaniel and D. Holly Brown. And I imagine Helen Nixon must be in that group as well. But it's a detailed and excellent report, and I think it holds us much more accountable for as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Schultz, your light is on? No? Does anybody else want to speak to this?
No.
Okay. Before we call for the vote, or before I call for the vote, I did want to just show my appreciation to staff for the expansion of the Teachers for Tomorrow program. It's going to expand to all of our high schools. I think that this is going to be a game changer in our ability to not only attract and retain top personnel in the longer term, but it also sends a very powerful message to our community that we want our students to pursue this very important profession, and that it is a profession that will allow our students after college to come back and live here in Fairfax County and pay it forward, as they say it, in teaching the next generation of students. So I think that's a wonderful new program in here, and the additional metrics are incredibly valuable. The last piece is just urging the superintendent and staff going forward that there has been a request from the SEPTA community to see a bit more granular detail in the future on our hiring and retention numbers for the teachers in our special ed programs. And so if, going forward, we can make sure that we address that, that would be great. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting the plan? And that is unanimous with everybody at the table. That motion carries. We've had a, the no change memo, policy on no change, was pulled off the consent agenda. So I call on Ms. Kies-Gamar for the motion. Ms. Kies-Gamar, do you want me to give you mine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the school board adopt the policies on the no change memo as detailed in the agenda item.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. Kies-Gamar, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. I specifically wanted to --
Your microphone, Ms. Kies-Gamar, please.
Thank you. Okay. I specifically wanted to speak to our, and I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going to ask Dr. -- Mr. Plattenberg to speak to the motion regarding, the section regarding easements. And if he could -- is he over? Okay. So can you speak to that, to explain to the community how that particular section is implemented in FCPS, please?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. The concern, the questions that have been asked previously regarding our easements and our permit process are, when the school board has authorized previous bond referendum and the programs within that bond referendum, those items have been, any easements associated with that were considered a part of that bond program or that project. Any additional easements that are presented to us, we go ahead and have, in many cases, our internal counsel or exterior third-party counsel, which Mr. Foster could speak to a little more, to take a look at that, so that we actually take a look at the initial impact. If there is something of value for the school board, then it is something that we will go ahead and prepare and bring before the school board for both review and approval and consideration. Generally, in the case of what we're doing at St. Louis Elementary School, we're working on the expansion of I-66, and we're working with VDOT and so forth, and people are talking about transfer and movement of properties. We always look at the initial impact, look for equal trade of the existing conditions, but we also look at the impact for future conditions. So it is something that we go through a great length of detail on. And to the questions and the comments that you've asked and other board members about this, we do, it is a transparent process where we bring back to the school board for a review and consideration on any that are outside the school bond program.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. I wanted to make sure that the community understood that there weren't decisions being made, that the board wasn't reviewing, that could impact our schools or their communities. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, I will call for the vote. To adopt the policies on the no change memo as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with -- oh, Ms. Palchek over. Okay, excellent. Prior to the, or actually, during the course of this meeting, I had one of our board members request that an additional item come off of the consent agenda, and that is item 6.01, approving the minutes from February 7. So I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move that we take 6.01 off the consent agenda.
No, you want to move to adopt the minutes, and then you can speak to any changes you want to make, but we first have to put the motion on the table.
But it has to come off the consent.
We've taken it off the consent agenda, so now I need a motion from you to adopt the minutes.
Okay. All right. Well, then, okay. We're doing it a little bit in reverse. Okay. I move to approve the minutes as provided in 6.01 of the consent agenda.
And do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Kies-Gamar. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah. So the reason I pulled this off, I've had a number of members of the community come forward, and they try to find things on board docs. It's not the most user-friendly device. One of the things I wanted to ask our clerk is that usually, prior, when an agenda appeared, there was a connection between either the minutes and/or what appeared in the agenda and a video link, and it would take you directly to the video link. And it seems like there's a big delay in between the time that a meeting happens and the video link goes up, or a motion is posted with the votes on the motion, or the minutes appear. And I was just wondering if you could help clarify for us, because I think it's becoming a transparency issue for the board, because people hear something happened at a meeting, then they go look for it, and they can't find it. And then we say, well, here's the link. It will appear here at some point when it's loaded. We don't have control over it as board members, because that's handled in the front office. And so if you could speak a little bit about what that process is and why, you know, I mean, we're mean, we're at, you know, the end of April, and we're loading in months' worth of minutes.
Yep. So the delay in the minutes getting done was some staffing issues in our office, which we've now corrected, which is why we're now caught up. The vote that you see on the screen right now, it will be available as soon as this meeting is done. And that's always the case. When I put the vote in, in board docs during the meeting, it's available immediately after the meeting. The video takes a day or two to come up.
So what about -- because sometimes we run meetings late, and this is not late. We run them really late. So, you know, we've made motions at 12 o'clock at night, and sometimes they're closed motions, but we have to read the motion. There might not be anybody here, but we make the motion sort of, we step out of wherever we are meeting, and we read a closed motion. What happens to the closed motion, the language of the motion and those votes? Do those also get posted?
Those get posted with the minutes, and they are recorded, and we have those on disk. Those do not get posted on board docs. The closed motion is posted on board docs, but the specific motions for a specific discipline case is not posted that night.
All right. So just, I don't know if any of my other colleagues get this. Believe it or not, there are actually people who pay a lot of attention to what's happening, and they want to find out more information, and then they can't find it. And so there isn't something particularly wrong with this motion in that, other than there were many months' worth of minutes backed up here, and it's expressly the concern that members of my community at least have identified as a concern. And I want to make sure that we continue to push ourselves to be as transparent and accountable to the public, who is looking to our motions to find out what we're talking about.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I understand, and I'm sorry if I didn't quite understand Madam Clerk's response. So when, if a citizen wants to find out what motions were voted on after a closed session, where would they look? How would they find the motion that was voted on?
We do have that. That's why we have the tower lit when you guys come out. So we do have an audio of that, and we have been asked on many occasions, how did the board vote on that particular motion? So they do have record. We do have record of those votes. And that's why when we come out and we take that vote in public, we're sitting at the dais. So that's how the public -- and I have answered that to the public many times. What is the vote on that particular motion?
So is there a way that they can find that on board docs or on FCPS?
No.
So is that true for all closed-session motions, then?
Everyone that has kept --
Everyone that we come out and we vote on is available upon request in an audio format, I guess.
After the mo -- yes. And we record that.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I was assuming that they were, just like all other motions that we vote on, written out, and we read them in the public, but they're not actually transcribed and posted with, in a written format on the website?
It is in the minutes. They are in the minutes.
Okay. So for whatever night that is, they could look in the minutes, and there would be, the closed-session motion would be listed there. Okay, that's --
Yes. That is correct.
So these minutes, whatever, on these dates, if we had closed sessions, and then we voted on something, they would be able to find them in there. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Moon?
That was exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay, thank you. So with that?
I'm just going to, just a quick go back. I don't mean to belabor the point. Is there a reason not to post the closed motion on board docs? I mean, it seems like it would save a lot of time. I mean, we have all of our other motions posted there, and we, when we make a closed motion, you know, we're appropriately cloaking, you know, information that is --
It's right here.
No, I know it's in the minutes, but why make somebody go to the minutes if we've tried to train the public to go to board docs to track an agenda? Because some people, you know, it could be a family. I mean, it could be a family that, you know, I mean, it could be lots of different things. But why not just post it on the board docs vehicle that we already have and save ourselves the time of somebody calling, you know, because they do, if they're calling you lots, imagine they're calling you lots, and they're calling us, and I say, well, here's the link to board docs, and they say it's not there, and then it starts the cycle again, and instead just get the information out into the public?
So the reason that it's done only audio is to allow staff to not have to stay until 11:12 at night when we come out and take the vote? And the reason I have you all sit at the dais is so that it can be recorded? If we wanted to continue posting it like this and televising it, then it just requires more staff. So that's something we can definitely talk about.
I just mean loading it physically, just the motion itself and the recorded vote in board docs. You know, it just seems --
We can do that.
It just seems like it would be a time saver. Okay, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. It was actually a very enlightening conversation for a lot of people, so I think it was helpful. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting the policies or the minutes from February 7th, February 21st, March 7th, March 21st, and April 4th regular business meetings? And that is unanimous. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provides for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 6.02, approve the 2019-2020 Annual Special Education Plan, Section 611 Part B Grant Funding Application, and Section 619 Part B Preschool Grant Funding Application as detailed in the agenda item. Item 6.03, award a contract for the Bailey's Elementary School Synthetic Turf Field Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, GTR Turf, Inc., in the amount of $444,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.04, move that the school board confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning January 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2019. Item 6.05, monthly report on employee separation. School board confirm the separations for the period beginning March 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2019. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Seven, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, adopt regulation 2601.33P, student rights and responsibilities as detailed in the agenda item. Eight, superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I wanted to let you know about two FCPS school counseling programs have been recognized by the American School Counselor Association, ASCA, as model programs, and were recognized with the ASCA Model Program Ramp designation for 2019 for successfully demonstrating how comprehensive school counseling programs can benefit all kids. And these schools are Lee High School and Montrose Alternative Learning Center. They'll both be recognized at the ASCA National Conference in Boston in June. And I remember years ago, when I was principal, we were one of the first schools to do the ramp designation and the impact it had on the instructional climate in our school. And I applaud both of these schools for going through that process. It's a designation that helps schools show that they're committed to delivering a comprehensive, data-driven school counseling program in an exemplary educational environment. And we have 26 school counseling programs with active ramp certification. I also wanted to let you know about an Albert Einstein Distinguished Fellow. Brenda Carpenter is a K-12 STEM teacher from Twain Middle School, and she's been serving as the Albert Einstein Distinguished Educator Fellow hosted by the National Science Foundation this year. She was selected from a nationwide pool of highly qualified applicants to participate in this program. And it gives our, the purpose of the program nationally is to provide outstanding STEM educators the opportunity to bring their insights, knowledge, and experience as classroom teachers to the legislative and executive branches of government, and to help them inform and implement federal education programs. So Brenda got the opportunity to strengthen her STEM knowledge through exposure and interaction with government policymakers, practitioners, and program managers. And that included groups like the National Council of State Legislators, the National Academy of Science, the Engineering and Medicine Association, the American Association for Advancement of Science, the Tiger Foundation, ACDSD, and Smithsonian Institutions. I know she must be exhausted after this year, but she looks forward to returning the FCPS in classrooms at her school and sharing her newly gained knowledge and experience with the local education community and school district. And we applaud her efforts, and we really are truly lucky to have such exemplary teachers here in Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda is board reports, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin for an audit committee report, and Ms. Evans for an update from governance committee.
So we met as an audit committee. It was, what, just last night, Mr. Moon?
Last night.
Yes, just last night. And it was, it was a great meeting. Our auditor general and her team presented us with a very informative report on our Medicaid audit for getting Medicaid reimbursement. And it was very lengthy discussion, and we are going to be recommending from the audit committee that it be brought to the full board for your review and input. It was, the highlights, what we were looking at was the fact that FCPS, on the one hand, is doing a really good job where it can in getting Medicaid reimbursements, but we did find out that there are some things that we could be doing to enhance, you know, the acquisition of additional funds for our students. So I look forward to working with Chairman Corbett Sanders and identifying time on the calendar for where we can work that into our work session. So that was primarily what we worked on.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Evans?
I know the board will be thrilled to hear that the governance committee has made it all the way through the strategic governance manual, including the appendices. Oh, come on.
Woo!
And we still have a couple of more things, a few more questions to answer, but we will soon be able to bring that to the full board, and I know all of you are waiting for that with bated breath. So, and in addition to that, we looked at several policies on the no change memo. This is something that the board should understand, that this is slightly different than what we used to do. We, governance now is looking at the policies on the no change memo, and we did ask for more review on some of these and perhaps a more robust review. So we are going to consider these at our next governance meeting. In the past, we have, the full board has looked at it for two weeks, and then it's gone on our agenda. Governance is taking a more in-depth look at each of these. So we will be reviewing them and giving a report to the full board.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Next on the agenda is board matters, and I call on Ms. Hines. Mr. Wilson?
I'll pass.
Ms. Pachek.
Just very briefly, I had the opportunity this week to attend a community event for Fairfax Pass and got to hear from both our FCPS director of office to support our homeless students as well as the county. It was very impressive, everything we do, including the fact that we had 52 students who are homeless go to college last year. I know they do incredible work, and I was surprised that it was my first time hearing directly from the office as a school board member. So Dr. Braybrand, I would love to see if we can have an intercarrying culture or student success reports, I believe she's under Teresa Johnson's office, report to us about the great work and success our program has had in supporting our homeless students, students in homelessness. So it was just very moving. I appreciate the schooling community work around that, and just wanted to share that with my colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Pachek. Mr. McAlveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Easter continues in my household, as I am jumping around like the Easter Bunny, and I appreciate my colleagues' indulgence and my inability to get around very well. And I also do want to say that I'm very grateful to Ms. Janie Strauss for returning the favor of driving me around. And anyway, thank you, thank you all, and I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break.
Ms. Darinak Kofax?
Yes, I too hope everyone is coming back rejuvenated and renewed from some time away. And I know I am, and I'm looking forward tomorrow to attending the Student Service Advisory Council at Edison High School. I'll be doing a similar one next, I think, Wednesday or Thursday at Hayfield, and I'm also looking forward to the Rose Hill Elementary Players Let the Games Begin program on Saturday, and I'll be holding that at Edison.
Mr. Moon?
I'll pass.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to briefly say that I appreciate Superintendent Braybrand, many of the principals in the Brack District, when I've been going out to visit and meet with them. I've just been very welcoming and definitely sharing a lot of the great things that they're doing to try and help support kids, and it's appreciated that they continue to look for ways to work with our families. And so it's always something I appreciate knowing how busy they are with their schedules. So I will continue my spring visits and will certainly share with you along the way any nuggets of wisdom, since I know you like to share nuggets with us as well. And then the only other thing I will just share with my colleagues is that I appreciate people's indulgence tonight with our SRNR discussion. I do still believe that this board and the school division wants to do what's best for kids. I just think that it's, we're going through some growing pains, and as long as we keep striving for best practice, and I do believe if we will continue to look at the county agencies who have been leaders on diversion, we will get where we need to go.
Ms. Kiesgahmara?
I know we have to go back in a closed session, so I'll pass.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I just want to thank a couple of PTAs. Brenmar Park Elementary School, I was pleased to speak with parents there and to attend Justice High School PTA meeting, as well as the Breughel Crest Civic Association Annual Meeting to discuss the budget and other issues there. I'm looking forward to the 5K races this Saturday at both Justice High School and at Falls Church High School. I hope folks can come out for that. And particularly looking forward to the 14th Annual Hispanic Leadership Alliance Scholarship Banquet coming up soon. Those, the stories of the scholarship winners are always so very heartening, so I am looking forward to that next month.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes, I have a lot of thanks to dispense. I had a lot of people come to my community office hours this week, and that's an opportunity for me to go and meet with individuals in the community and sort of bring an office to them, and I thank them for spending their evening with me. I also had a PTA president's roundtable. I will say that one of the most interesting things that came from my PTA president's roundtable having to do with our discussion this evening was the difficulty in schools getting female security personnel to be able to access bathrooms where the vaping is occurring. And it was the first time I had actually heard that, that part of the conversation, that that's part of the difficulty in securing our schools. So I thank my PTA presidents for bringing that up. So I thank my PTA Presidents for bringing that up. I want to thank the parents who were here, I know they're long gone, who were here earlier, and who testified this evening, and I just want to say that I believe, and this may be a discussion that we have to have as a Board, I believe that if a child is pulled out of a room and placed into another room and left alone, that's seclusion. But I also believe that if you clear a room of all children other than one child.
That's seclusion.
That is seclusion. I believe that, and I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that we have a belief system as a system that that's what that means, and I just want parents to know that, that I, I am with them on that. I want to thank Principal Dowd's at Centerville Elementary. Dr. Ivy was here earlier. She was with me at a really special event, a Get to Green Program Award for the fourth green flag, the fourth permanent green flag for Centerville Elementary. It is the only elementary school in the United States of America that has this award. They have a stream preservation program with the children, a trout release program that has grown exponentially over the years with the, with the children. The National Wildlife Federation was there, members of the EPA, partners with, you know, business partners with the community, Luckstone, who brings in truckloads of gravel to help improve nature paths on their stream and their, on the school property. Really just amazing. The kids were so excited, and I forget his name, what's the raccoon, I don't know the raccoon's name, but was, it was just a wonderful, all the children were outside for this massive presentation for their permanent green flag. Members of the Sierra Club, who saw my environmental comments at the Joint Board of Supervisors, comment, my comments, were there and grateful for those. So I just, I'm very, very proud of that school. I also had, I also have to thank Principals at Silverbrook. My goodness, I had a lot of school visits. Silverbrook, Oakview, Rocky Run, and Union Mill, and I want to say, nobody's left. So to Jeff Pladberg and his staff, the construction staff at Rocky Run, I walked through, and it was an, it's an amazing expansion, it's ahead of schedule, it's beautiful, the grounds are beautiful, the building is beautiful. If anyone wants to see, you know, our, our construction guys doing an amazing job, and girls, I guess, again, very, very proud. Ms. McLaughlin stepped away from the dais. We had a presentation from a group that approached me at the Fairfax County Council PTA event, a group called Yes for Schools. I will be bringing it to Dr. Duran, and Dr. Presidio, and Dr. Ivy, and whomever. It is a science-based breathing program. It's kind of like mindfulness, but it's a science-based breathing program that, for the schools where it's been deployed, reduced discipline, improved grades, improved attendance. You know, this is in use in the Bay Area, in LA, in New York, and Chicago. It's called Yes for Schools. It was an amazing presentation, and it's much better than vaping, and we need to be adopting all of this. I was with a couple of my colleagues, Mr. Moon and Mr. McAlveen, at Lake Braddock to, they should, they're there, they're in Detroit right now, the Fusion Four Girls from, the robotic team from Lake Braddock and Robinson, with the Lego League World Championship right now, and the check presentation from Women in Defense, and so that was very exciting. So it's been a busy couple of weeks, and I thank everybody who was here tonight.
Ms. Strauss?
I want to thank the Northern Virginia Student Environmental Action Showcase for their amazing activities at George Mason this last week, and I had an opportunity to work with two particular middle school, set of medical, medical, middle school students to discuss some of their projects, but it's a very impressive, very large program, and showcasing all the students' environmental projects. I want to thank the McLean Safe Community Coalition, which has been in existence for 25 years. They, they put on wonderful programs in support of the mental health issues, student ethics forums, and many support operations for the schools in, in my area. They sponsored their annual dinner for all of our school administrators, and Mr. McAlveen did a lovely presentation on, an update on various activities. And if you are looking for great plays and musicals in the next two weeks, you can try Herndon, Westfield, Fairfax, Lee, Woodson, Oakden, Robinson, Madison, Hayfield, South County, and South Lakes, and I could also give you the schedules in Arlington County, and Prince William, and a few other counties if you'd like. We have 16 shows in the next two weekends. We're very busy. So anyway, it'll be lots of fun. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I too have been very busy, but I'm not going to go through the whole list of where I've been, and instead I'm going to give a shout-out and encourage our students to participate on Saturday at the Mount Vernon High School Summer Job Fair from 10 to 12. It's available for all of the students who are interested in obtaining employment or volunteer opportunities during the summer. There will also be, Hayfield High School, or Secondary School, will be hosting the Region Three and Four Military Student Ambassador Program, and Holland Meadows will be having their annual Earth Day celebration, which is incredible. Back to Hayfield on Tuesday will be the Safety Career Day with Communities of Trust, and the, at West Potomac next week, across three days, you can go and visit the library and see the ESAL Students Strategies Share Fair. And so with that, I am going to make a motion for us to go into closed session. The Board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students pursuant to Section 2.23711A2 of the Code of Virginia; two, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance, demotion, termination, discipline, salaries, and/or resignation of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2371A1 of the Code of Virginia; and three, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2371A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Darrenak Kofax. All those in favor? And that is unanimous, and we are now in closed session.